Ordinary people who want to make sure that if we are going to legalize cannabis, if we are going to sell it at retail, we are going to do it the right way to protect our community. We're going to advance social causes. We're going to participate as a group in trying to figure out exactly how to make this a safe, uh, legal action for our adults in the community. We're going to bring money into the community. We're going to bring jobs into the community. And they've done every one of those things. Then, because of a variety of issues which aren't really worthy of going into, they had actually not one but three public hearings. Three times the public was called forward to talk to us and ask us what we thought about their ideas. We had people show up. We had other competing businesses show up. We had members of the public. We had people who were next door. We had businesses. You have letters that have been submitted in favor of us. We did not have people come before us to tell us, "Don't do it." Not once. And so I'm asking you to listen to this group, give them a chance to just introduce themselves briefly, and so you get to know that we are inviting in a small business that is interested in building on our community, not interested in detracting. So I would ask if you would listen to Mary Blout. She is the president of the company. Thank you.
I see no objections from the committee. Same process, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Is the microphone okay?
The microphone is fine. As long as Counselor DiMarco's not speaking, the microphone is fine.
Um, my name is Mary Susan Blout. Uh, my address is 38 Gould Street, Stoneham, Mass. Um, okay. I am a managing member of DMS Trinity LLC doing business as Trinity Naturals. I've been married for 22 years and am the mother of three ages 19, 15, and 8. My husband Jay and I both grew up in Stoneham, and we are now raising our family there. I'm very familiar with the community of Malden. My father had relatives from Malden and graduated from MC class of 58. Trinity Naturals was born out of a desire to create a family business. Two of my brothers-in-law are also members of the company. My sister-in-law created all of our interior and exterior retail designs. My 19-year-old son is a business manager at Humane Orno and is very interested in working for the company upon graduation. I've made it clear to my two older children why I am comfortable working in this industry. Like alcohol and nicotine, cannabis is legal and controlled. I also feel strongly about the benefits of cannabis in contrast to the dangers of more addictive substances. I will quickly now run through a little bit more on us, specifically the other investors and our consultants. Angelina Ventouris, she and her husband Teddy have three children. She's a real estate developer and property manager for several apartments in downtown Boston. Angelina's oldest daughter Maria suffered from a stroke while she was a toddler and is now paralyzed on her right side. One of Angelina's goals in creating a DMS is to remove the stigma attached to marijuana and help make it more accessible to stroke victims. Steve Byrne. Steve works as a real estate developer in the greater Lowell area and is a licensed contractor. Steve was a victim of the Marathon bombings in 2013 and suffers from PTSD due to the attack. He has successfully used marijuana to manage his PTSD and seeks to make it more accessible to people suffering from similar afflictions. Steve has accumulated vast knowledge about cannabis and its benefits. Dylan Handy. Dylan works in real estate technologies at his family's business, Elm Street Technology. Dylan's specialty within sales and marketing is social media. Dylan is a real estate investor through his own company, Handy Properties LLC. His experience includes managing successful startups through maximizing technology and modern marketing methods. Dylan is active in the LGBTQ+ community and charities, including AIDS Action, Boston Pride, and Rhode Island Pride. Brian Collins, my other brother-in-law. Brian grew up in Dorchester, Mass. and has been a resident of Swambskit, uh, Swambskit, Mass. since 97. He has two sons, Cole, currently enrolled at Norwich University Military College of Vermont, and Mace enrolled at St. John's Prep in Danvers. Brian has been an electrician for over 35 years and formed his company BCE in 2006. BCE has recently helped set up multiple COVID-19 vaccination sites for Fallon Ambulances. Brian is a 1984 graduate of Blue Hills Regional Vocational Technical High School. Jean Casali. Jean is a retired pharmacist who worked in the pharmaceutical industry for over 40 years. She has experience in retail community pharmacy, hospital pharmacy, long-term care, and most recently at the State Office of Pharmacy Services, serving the Department of Correction and state hospitals. Jean is well informed on the policies and procedures of medical cannabis with an extensive knowledge of medical cannabis drug interactions with prescription drugs. Evan Dolber, retail consultant. Evan is a local Malden guy. In over four years of professional cannabis experience, Evan has helped, held multiple director-level positions, including Director of Product Manufacturing and Wholesale, Director of Operations, and currently Director of Retail at Native Sun in Hudson, Mass. Jerry Gallo, he'll be the head of security. Jerry served over 34 years as a special agent with the U.S. Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives. After his retirement, Jerry has used his specialized law enforcement training and expertise to provide firearms training and security risk consulting services. Jerry spent 15 years as a member of the Special Response Team, conducting scores of law enforcement operations and executive protection missions. Jerry was ATF's lead firearms instructor in New England, training federal, state, and local police in firearms and tactics. Jerry has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. In addition to his law enforcement credentials, Jerry is also a Massachusetts State Police Certified Basic Home Safety and Law Enforcement Officer Safety Act Instructor and NRA Basic Pistol. Jerry, along with Gontrand Andre, will oversee security operations and training for our cannabis retail and dispensary clients. Gontrand Andre, owner of One Protection Security, uh, 2017 currently, security supervisor for Rite Aid Pharmacy, 2013 through 2017, Brooks Eckerd's Maxi Drug Company Loss Prevention Specialist, protected company's assets from internal and external thefts, on-the-job shadow training with the Lynn Mass Police Department, and computer training with FEMA, up-to-date watch guard license and license to carry. At this point, oh, no, I'm sorry, one more. Security plan. Our security consultant will design and implement a security plan with the review and approval of the Malden Police Chief. The plan will show all security measures for the site to protect the property from theft or other criminal activity, including indoor delivery, a high-definition camera system, internal and external filming of the property, central station alarm with cellular backup, and 24-hour monitoring off-site, as well as a generator backup for security measures. The plan will include how marijuana and marijuana products are transported to and from the location to ensure the safety of employees and the public. DMS will accept both cash and debit card payments at the store and use encryption software and the latest generation point-of-sale hardware to protect and secure our payments. We will have an onsite vault to maintain excess cash on the property, and we will have a security guard onsite at all hours of operation. We have a few other renderings of the property, but this one made sense to show after my few points there on security. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to my other brother-in-law, Dennis Pignoni Dos Santos, one of the other managing members of the company.
Okay, so Mary, before I forget-
Yes.
-uh, and Attorney DiMarco, we're just going to need a copy of this presentation for the record, so if you could send it to Clerk Lucy, uh, at your earliest time, so we have for the record. I do have a question. Counselor Hayes.
I do, thank you. First of all, thank you for that presentation. That was great. I wanted to take, um, Mr. DiMarco's, um, your suggestion, or you were saying that you could show us, uh, the equity application, and that you're a women-owned and an equity applicant, which is fantastic, and I think that is something to be super proud of, so I would love to have that included in, um, the paperwork that we have tonight.
Uh, my apologies. I do have the paperwork. I can either give it to you tonight, copies, or I can send it to, uh, for the council to have as part of the public record.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I would send it to the clerk.
I will send it to the clerk for dissemination.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
Hey, Counselor.
Hello. Uh, my name is Dennis. Address 144 Marlborough Street, Stoneham, Massachusetts. So, right. So just a little background about myself. I'm originally from Brazil. Uh, I started computer engineering. I moved here in 2008 to learn, to improve my English, have more, uh, just some life experience and more opportunities. Uh, I found out that my degree didn't help me to get a job here much, so I put myself through school. Uh, got a professional license. I've, I've had over 10 years of retail experience. I also suffer with anxiety. I used to take prescription medication. I had a lot of side effects with that. I did a little research. I found out that medical cannabis would help with that. I went to see a doctor, got my medical card, and, uh, my experience when I went to the dispenser the first time was amazing. Just getting information, how to consume, knowing that I was doing it safely was one of the main reasons that, uh, this business came about, uh, because we want to provide, uh, people in Malden to have the same experience. I've also, over the years, learned how to grow, see to consume. I learned a little bit about, uh, the science of the plants. I got married over five years ago. I got a brand-new family with me. And then we're gonna go for our employment diversity plan. So DMS's focus on diversity stems from our ownership team, and it will be shown in our employee diversity, reflecting our realistic cross-section of the Malden community, most specifically those in protected classes. 6% of our employee base will be sought in Malden, and we intend to find these employees by doing the following. Local job, job fairs, working with the city department who can provide directives on local candidates. We will prioritize qualified residents of Malden who are from the following demographics: women, minorities like myself, people with disabilities, veterans, people of all gender, gender identities and sexual orientation also, like myself. Uh, community impact. DMS, DMS diverse management team will aid in connecting across a large range of different groups of people, including various protected classes. DMS aims to support and enter into a community of Malden as a positive, active member through providing us a safe and secure cannabis retail, retail facility, educating the residents of Malden about the use of cannabis and its related products, supporting addiction programs, and creating educational curricula for students of all ages. In addition, DMS will utilize local business and support the economy in Malden. We also has, uh, we joined the Chamber of Commerce, retain and use local business throughout our application. Disproportionate impact partnership. DMS diverse management team has partnered with Fenway Health, AIDS Action of Boston, a signed letter of intended zone file. DMS aims to support this outreach partner and provide both financial and management assistance through, providing a safe and secure space within our facility at the request of leadership at Fenway Health, AIDS Action. Provide mentors from DMS, both staff and management, allowing access to office space, conference space, computer, Wi-Fi access, printer, and other office materials to the participants in the program. So I'm gonna pass it along to Mark, so he can, um, to Rob, sorry, to talk about the location, and thank you so much for, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the council. I hope that introduction to the membership and the ownership was helpful. This group has impressed me since the beginning. I don't take these cases on lightly. I take the representations very serious because I'm a member of the community, and I want to make sure that we bring in people who want to care about our community. Couple of things happened over the course of this case. One of the main issues that was found by the planning board and resulted in a recommendation that you not approve us was the parking issue. However, we've done parking counts, uh, with other cannabis retailers. We've, we have our parking and traffic person here today, if you'd like to hear from her to discuss the traffic. One of the things that our, um, our peer review stated was that we had laudable goals when it came to the traffic. We plan on having the detail for the first 30 days to see how the traffic goes in the area. We've talked to the local counselor about helping with the mitigation efforts in that area, with the left turn that plans to come off of Route 60, with the lights, with stop signage. We want to put in stop signs at our location to make sure that traffic is controlled. We're gonna have that review on a monthly basis of the detail. It's, things have changed. It's not the same as it was when cannabis was first legalized in the state. You don't have the lines going around the corners. These are regular small businesses. We expect we'll have the same type of business as would any retail establishment, hopefully doing a lot better, obviously, but we're not going to be seeing the lines of people backed up onto Route 60 and 93. It's an ordinary business. So based upon that, based upon our technology online, based upon our staff, our clients' shopping online and ordering ahead of time so they stop in just for a pickup, we plan on controlling the traffic in the area and helping people to, um, choose bicycle, walking, public transportation. We will have an area devoted to ride shares. So these are the measures we'll take to make sure that traffic doesn't become an issue and parking doesn't become an issue. And one last thing, when it comes to the parking. We signed a letter, uh, of understanding with our neighbor. The, uh, New England Tea and Coffee owns the other side of that lot. There was a question that was raised at the time as to why this letter of intent wasn't stronger, and I'd like to address that. New England Tea and Coffee was bought out, as many of you know, by an international company. They don't sign binding letters of intent because it would require them to go all the way up through their various levels. So that would have delayed us another couple of years trying to get that done. We signed a letter based upon the usage that's been there, just looking at Google Earth, for over 15 years. Now, those of us who have grown up in the area know that it goes even further back than that, that the lot was shared. This is not going to be a parking issue. We are within walking distance of public parking. We are across the street. We are one lot away from central business. We are 600 feet from the CBD garage. We're near the bike path. We're gonna do shielding so that the kids don't see us. People who come will not be seeing cannabis on the outside of the building. We expect to be drawing our people through advertisement and through, and, and controlling people coming through the doors. So we're putting in place every possible measure to control this and to make sure that only those who want to legally use the substance, purchase, as is their right in the state of Massachusetts, are able to do so. If you have any questions for either me, my clients, or the professionals we brought here tonight, um, we're open to listening. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Counselor. You also have your presentation?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so I'll start with questions. Counselor Linnahan, with your mic is on first, and then Counselor Winslow.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Attorney DiMarco. That was a great overview. Um, I'm just wondering if you could actually outline, how short on parking are you at this point in time, and also how close to the T are you?
Okay, that's a, that's a really good question.
Just for the benefit of the public.
Yeah, we are, we are about a five-to-10-minute walk from the T. Uh, in terms of the parking, we do not believe we are short on parking.
Understood.
Okay? We, we are technically short only because they are counting the spots that would be used for the area that is empty. We are restricting the size of our business, and if you look at the plans that have been submitted, I believe they're right here, Mary.
I was just gonna get to page down, you'll get to, yes.
Here we go. So if you look at these plans that have been submitted, there are certain sections of the building that are staying vacant, and we can have a restriction, we agree to a restriction, to keep them vacant. We will not need the parking that is counted using those spaces.
I see.
So we, we, our count, count is, uh, I missed the count for the parking? 25. I apologize. Thank you. Our parking count is 25, and there are those spots available to us.
That's very helpful. I also am just wondering if you could expand a little bit on the ride share management plan. That's becoming a pet peeve of mine in the downtown in general, and I know we're not at the point of doing delivery or anything like that in, in, in the city, but I do feel like ride share willy-nilly is a huge clog on the traffic flow, and if you have a plan for that, if you're thinking about it, I'm glad to hear you're thinking about it. I'm just wondering if you could talk a little bit more about that and what your bike parking situation is likely to be.
If I could invite up our traffic consultant, that would be great.
I would love that.
Thank you.
And then also, before we have the traffic consultant speak, we do have the Building Commissioner, Mr. Nelson Miller here, as well as Michelle Romero is available for any questions that might have come up. You have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, just for the record, my name is Rebecca Brown. I'm with Greenman Peterson, and we're located at, uh, 187 Ballard Vale Street in Wilmington, Massachusetts. So to respond to your questions about the ride share, so we plan to have a dedicated ride share space for Uber and Lyft that will be located near the entrance so that those drivers, as they're bringing people, will be able to have a dedicated location that they can park in. And then in terms of employees as well, when they are onboarded, they would also be registered with New Ride, so that would help to provide ride matching services as well for the employees so that if they wanted to commute with other people to and work. It also offers them incentives for making green trips if they want to walk and bike to work, and also allows them to get a guaranteed ride home if they were to need to leave work in an emergency when they either commuted with somebody via carpool or took a bike or walked to work or, or using public transit as well. And I know it was mentioned about how close we are to the T station, but we are also less than 400 feet away from bus service as well, so there is also bus service right along, um, along Main Street and Center Street. So there's two different routes there that people could access as well. And I think there was one other item. Oh, bicycle parking, yes. So there will be, um, so this, oh, barely showing up there. So this portion of the garage area here, or of the building area, is indoors and was formerly used as a garage bay area. So there will be, um, right here is bicycle rack, and then bicycles could be stored inside in inclement weather in that area as well for employee use. But those would be bicycle racks for patrons who are coming to the facility that are located out here, could park their bikes here. Employees could also bring their bicycles into this area.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, I just had a few questions, um, related to just the property. I know when I look at the city's map geo, uh, database, there's some, I don't, is there a, some sort of type of easement that crosses the property?
They're-
Sort of on the eastern property line?
Yes.
So, and what is that easement?
That's the, we don't have our, our surveyor here. That easement is, if memory serves, that's the easement that was for access from the MBTA, I believe, has a access at the back portion, but it shouldn't interfere at all with any of our usage.
There's a slide.
Was, which one is there? I don't know. There it is. Ah, great.
So, yeah.
This is not, yeah, this is not my present, presentation. I apologize.
Okay, um, I guess the question comes out, but I know I wasn't able to attend the neighborhood meetings, but I did make a comment about, you know, the, the city's been working on what's called the Spot Pond Greenway-
Yes.
-which would connect from Oak Grove and, and down Middlesex Street, and this property lies right in, you know, between-
Yep.
-Middlesex and the Northern Strand Trail. So what, if any, are the plans to try to make and, uh, help with that connection, so?
The, the client has, we've had that discussion. The only issue that we see is that opening up the back of the property to the bike path encourages the children who would be using the bike path to then access the area around us. There's no opposition to working with the city on a plan that would continue to maintain safety, but we are concerned about making sure that we're not gonna simply open up a back. There's gonna be a gate at that portion, so we can work with the city in terms of making sure that there, there's accessibility, but having children cross the, the lot at that point may not be the best avenue.
So, yeah, I mean, I guess it's just sort of critical to, you know, to have these regional connections to, you know, I think it's, it's critical to, to do that. I mean, I just know, like, when we did the Salemwood School, there was a need for a connection from Eastern Avenue to Roosevelt Field. We worked through that, and so I, I guess to me, that's, that's one of the things that's very critical to-
And we are, and we are absolutely open to making that connection work, but I think that what it requires is that we have a safety, we, we need to make sure that the safety is first, but we also will obviously make it as accessible as possible.
And then, um, just another question. Is there, um, Counselor O'Malley pulled up, is there any part of the current use that is using the MBTA right away, and are you gonna continue to use that? Is there any encroachments that you're-
There, there has been an encroachment that has been used.
And is there in place now a license with the MBTA to use that?
We will not be using it. We have the ability to not use it, I should, the way I should put it.
So, but right, is your parking plan relying on that?
No.
So, I mean, I guess the other thing I point out is that, um, you know, off of Main Street, there is a lot that I think is pretty much fenced in and other paved areas. I mean, if there's a parking issue, that's another potential avenue, so, but that would require some sort of connection there, so. So those are the type of things, I, I mean, I appreciate the, um-
And, and, and Counselor, just to be, to be clear, in terms of the parking, my clients have already signed up with the parking program that the city maintains to give validated parking to, um, clients as they come in. So we're, we're prepared to work on the parking and to hit all the points that have been raised by-
So is that the lot at the corner of, um, Charles and Main Street there? Is that, or what's, what was?
That, that lot, I don't know that that's part of the program, but the, but we are in direct line to CBD.
Right, so.
But if that lot was part of the program, then yes. I think the city is still bringing that online, if I'm not mistaken. That lot is not part of your parking program.
Uh, you know, because there's two lots. There's one at, um, right on Charles and Main, and then there's one that's between sort of the apartments and the, the bike trail, so there's kind of two.
And those are only, those are only 200 feet away.
Yeah, so, all right. So, all right, all right, thank you. Those are my questions. Thanks, great.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you. It's a great presentation. I just want to echo my, my colleagues' statements about bringing some type of connection to, to the Northern Strand. I think connecting Charles to, to the Northern Strand there is, is beneficial, is particularly related to the fact that there have been some questions about parking and how people will get in and out of the site, connecting to some other parking facilities in the area. And maybe if there's an ability to work with your neighbor, New England Coffee, to, to figure that out, come to some type of compromise, I think it could really help alleviate a lot of the, the commuting challenges that we're facing, and it will also, I think, help bring some good mitigation to, to the community.
I, I, I agree, Counselor. I would, I would point out that right now there are heavy trucks going in and out for all the businesses in that area. By do, bringing on our business type, we'll be cutting down on that heavy trucking, which will make it much safer to be able to implement that type of plan, which is why we're open to it, but we need to just make sure that we're not gonna run afoul of the CCC's requirements.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor- Councilor Seega. Sorry, it's tough seeing these lights with all the, uh-
Thank you, Mr. President.
With the screen back.
I don't necessarily have any questions, but I just wanted to, um, discuss the interview process, and I, along with Councilor Crowe, had, um, was able to attend both of them, and the difference between the first interview and the second interview was, it, it was like a whole different company, so you listened to what the CLAC had to say, and then you came back, and you had everything and then some to present to them, so kudos to you all. I am in full support of this applicant, um, moving forward regardless of the parking spaces. I think that, uh, you know, with, I think it's like thirteen thousand square feet, and you're going to be using four thousand square feet, so you don't need the fifty-two spaces, the twenty-five spaces is more than adequate. It, it just, it makes perfect sense. I, I understand where you're coming from, so the bike path is not a deal breaker for me, especially somebody who loves children such as myself, I would never want, uh, two thirteen-year-olds riding their bicycle on the Northern Strand to accidentally, you know, enter your property and wonder what is going on in there, or they've heard rumors about what is going on in there, so, um, that's not a deal breaker for me. But, um, I, I love the business plan, I can't wait to come to the grand opening, and I, if you can hurry it along, because there, if you heard the public comment this morning, there's some people around the city that think that the city of Malden have been dragging their feet for the last five years, when in fact we've already approved two. There was a two-year COVID stint, and you had some hurdles, we've had other people that have hurdles, people have come back multiple times, so thanks for not giving up. This is a, a brand-new business to the city, and everybody is learning on how to do things as we're all going forward, so we look forward, well, I look forward to you, hopefully my colleagues do, working with you in the future, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Oh, my screen went down for some reason. Councilor Simonelli.
Mr. President, I'd like to say that, uh, you know, I'm, I'm impressed, um, with this business plan, with this presentation tonight. You know, I, you know, coming on, late on the council this year, I was coming in January, I know you guys have been working on this thing for, uh, some time prior to that, so, uh, I was able to reach out to you guys and, and get up to speed on the business plan, on what you're, what you're planning on doing down there, and I, I gotta say, you know, I, at first I was a little apprehensive with the whole cannabis thing, uh, being, having my trials and tribulations in my life, it kind of makes me a little nervous here and there when you hear some of these things, but I have to say, you know, after, you know, hearing about this and, and, and seeing it tonight and, and listening to, to your business plan, I, I think that it's a, it's a good viable business, uh, for the community and the city of Malden. Uh, and I, you know, I, I will echo, uh, Councilor Seega saying that, you know, we have, we have been, I know that since I've gone onboard here, that we've been, you know, uh, moving forward to try and, uh, develop this, uh, cannabis business, if you will, uh, throughout the city of Malden. So, you know, I, you know, I'm in support of it, I, I do, you know, the, I do have a little bit of a concern with, and I'm sure we can get by it, with the, you know, the little right-of-way space and linking it up with the green stuff, I, I mean, I don't have a problem with that, but I, I do with, you know, young kids riding bikes, uh, along that corridor too, and then pulling off, uh, into the parking lot, and, you know, wondering what's going on, and, you know, figuring out maybe how they can get in there, because kids will be kids, so, you know, I mean, but it's something we can look at as we move forward, but, I mean, overall, I mean, I'm in support of this, this, uh, this process and, and, and your business plan, and, uh, I, I, I think you're going to do very well with it.
Uh, Councilor, I have to thank you for something, you just made me remember the, one of the pieces that wasn't mentioned tonight. My client is going to have a parking attendant out there as well, so that's going to be helping quite a bit with the, um, with the transfer of people across the area.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Condon.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. The team you've put together is quite impressive, that's for sure. I went by there today, and, uh, there had to be thirty-five, forty cars in there. T&amp;J, where are they going? T&amp;J, that, uh, business there?
I, we actually have the building owner here, if, if you'd like him to step up and, and give you an answer.
Are they staying there?
They can't due to the rules and regulations, so right now they've rented the building next door, um, we don't have an exact plan.
Can you just put your name and address? We, I know you add, but this, that's over the record.
Ed Spinney, um, Forty Spruce Road, North Reading, grew up in Malden, have a forty-five-year-old sign business in Malden, been here for a long time, and own a few buildings, this is one of them. Always liked to buy locally. So there's no exact plan for where they're going to, uh, go, but he's already made one step in renting the building next door, so most likely it's going to be a simple movement to next door, um, and that will free up this building for, um, the cannabis, um, but I cannot talk for them exactly, but that's what the plan, uh, looks like. So they're going to stay in Malden as well, they're just going to shrink down a little bit and, um, stay in Malden.
Got to be honest with you, when I pulled in there today, there was people coming from everywhere, there was cars everywhere.
Yep.
And I stopped somebody, I said, "Where's New England Co-, what, New Eng-, what is New England Coffee doing with that?" There was like three trailer trucks there, parked.
That entrance is the main entrance to the two properties. That, uh, former Middlesex Turnpike, uh, Middlesex Ave there, um, we both have easements over that, uh, and it's the main entrance to Thirty-Six Charles, and it's the main entrance to, um, the New England Tea and Coffee. It's the only entrance that New England Tea and Coffee can bring large trucks in. There is no other entrance from there to the corner that New England can bring in trucks. Uh, the buildings are too close together, and so all of their main, uh, in-and-out shipping has been through that entrance for years, um, and all of the entrances of all the companies, which I used at my sign company there, were also through that entrance. So we share that entrance, and now with the agreement we have, we share parking, so that, uh, I honestly think that parking is going to be a non-issue once we see what goes on, but, uh-
What kind of business is T&amp;J? What are they, auto body or-
TJ is a auto body and auto repair business, which I think is, is going to pare down to just auto body and get rid of the repair. And a lot of the vehicles he has out there are not supposed to be where they are, uh, and he leaves them there. He now currently sells vehicles, which, um, he's not going to be doing, so, uh, as far as all of the stuff, uh, the cannabis is going to clean up the exterior of the building, the interior of the building, and the parking lot, and so all of that's going to go away, and the next-door facility doesn't have room for that kind of parking, so it's gonna, he's going to have to pare down and do what he has to do.
It was a little bit overwhelming, I got to tell you. There was a lot of cars here today.
I think this is the best thing for the use of the property, myself, so, uh, it's going to be cleaned up, it's going to be remodeled, redone, repointed, and, and, and things like that, and then there won't be half of the amount of vehicles and traffic coming in and out as there is today.
So he has a Class II deals license there?
Uh, I don't want to-
I don't either, but I saw plenty of cars that looked like they were for sale.
Did you buy one, Councilor?
No.
What he has, but he will be off the property.
Yeah, yeah, so, th- this is part of cleaning up the property, as, as Mr. Spinney said, that the cars are going to be removed, he's moving to another location, even though it's right there, he's going to have to seek his permitting, et cetera, for that location separate. Uh, so this location no longer has that congestion.
Presently, how much, uh, space do they take up?
They currently rent the entire building.
The entire building?
Entire building.
So you are going to move in there with four thousand square feet?
The cannabis is going to move in and take four thousand of the existing building and leave the rest, uh, empty at this point, correct?
Yes. Due to the regulations, we, we can't use the rest of it, so we're going to not use it, and they, it does have, and we would come back to, obviously, the council as well as CCC, as well as the CLAC, we do have thoughts about what can be done in the future. If some of the regulations do change and things like that, then we would reexamine that, but all of it with an eye, eye towards making sure that the neighborhood is in support of it.
How many employees are you going to have?
He's not there.
Not at that location.
I'm not at that location.
Oh, you're not?
And it's just the property.
Oh, I'm sorry, how many employees do? Just four?
Forty.
Oh, forty?
There will be forty, but on rotating shifts throughout the week.
What will your hours of operation be there?
Nine to nine.
Nine to nine? So the employees will be parking where, at the garage or?
Uh, yeah, uh, it will be adequate parking for them, and we'll also encourage, uh, the T, uh, busing, uh, bicycles, so we'll sort of have to figure out what their preference is as we, uh, hire, but we'll, we'll segment that out.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilor Condon.
Thank you.
Councilor Crowe. Uh, one second, Councilor Crowe, hold on, we got a bunch of lights on, then just go to Councilor Crowe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, and, you know, again, I've seen this presentation a couple of times now, but really this, um, organization, as Councilor Seega had said, um, did their interviews with the CC, with the CLAC, and then sort of listened to everybody, and then took it back and really revamped it. Same thing, when they first went, they, um, the automotive was staying, they had to go back and get control of the building, so every time they've been asked to, to go back and revamp, relook at, the original plan had the opening at the, at the bike path, which was a concern of mine, and so they, you know, re, reoriented that. I do think that they are very open to seeing about that connection, just making sure it's safe and, you know, that meets everyone's, everyone's needs. Um, I had mentioned that actually to Mary, um, about, you know, making that connection, and she was, said that we have already been talking about it, we just have to make sure that it happens, so I do feel like they've had three, um, public meetings, uh, you mean, again, every time they've been asked to do something, I mean, I think that they've, they've stood up and actually, you know, listened and, and, and done it. It is a tough little area, it's tough for anything, um, you know, Charles Street's very busy. My, my left turn is not happening at Middlesex, it's at Canal Mall, but that's all right. The, um, just because we would have a backup of, of traffic onto Main Street at that point, but the, um, but they, again, they've been really open to, um, to working with, with the neighborhood, with me, um, uh, just to make sure that this is the best possible use, so I'm in full favor.
Thank you, Councilor Crowe. Councilor Murphy. Wait one second, I'm just trying to figure out the audio here, hold on, Councilor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just, uh, two questions, uh, and the first one is just more of a statement about parking for your employees. One of the things that you might think about is having your employees park at the CBD G Garage, um, just to, uh, kind of clear out parking. We've had trouble, um, just in downtown, um, Malden with, um, owners, business owners and employees taking the prime parking spots, um, so that's one of the reasons we put the parking meters in, so that we could kind of have turnover, so you might, you know, kind of think of making that an option for your employees, that they're over there, keeps the parking spaces clear for your, for your, um, your, uh, customers. Um, and the other thing that's always of interest to me, that, um, whenever we do have these conversations comes up, is, um, the education of our, um, children and also our community, and I did notice on one of your slides that you did, um, reference that, and I was just curious if, um, either of you could speak about how you anticipate going about that, um, and, um, you know, just, you know, bringing the, the concerns. Obviously, you know, we, we talk a lot about, you know, how to, in the earlier grades, let children know about, um, alcohol and drugs, you know, and other behaviors that might affect them as they, uh, move forward in life and make, you know, have them be addictive or whatever. So just curious as to, um, what thoughts you've put into how you're going to integrate with the community on topics like that?
Sure, about children really young, I, I don't know if I can speak to that necessarily, but one of the reasons that we felt, uh, it was so important to have Jean onboard, our consultant, who was in one of the slides, and she is actually here too, um, she has extensive experience in medicinals, which we are not going to be, we are retail exclusively, but we wanted to have somebody who has the experience with educating the public on other drug interactions and cannabis in general, especially if somebody is new to it, um, an older individual, somebody who was already taking a different prescription, um, so she is here, if you'd like to have her, uh, discuss sort of her thoughts on, um, uh, the handouts and other information that she was willing to put together for us, once we are open.
Okay, so you were, you're thinking more about drug interaction as opposed to actually, um, education?
Both.
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 Okay, that's all-
Yeah, Councilor Murphy, uh, just a, step in for just a second. So one of the things that in, uh, that was very informative about this group was the fact that they were, that, um, Mary Blount is being a little bit more humble, she's worked with WGBH for years, she's been involved in public education, and so their, their approach to this has always been one of, let's make sure people understand what it is that they're getting involved in and what is out there. We've talked about outreaches to the community, as you saw, Fenway wants us to be doing the outreaches, so outreaches to the community will involve, what, what are the harmful effects of, of, of drugs on young minds, what, you know, what is the proper age to be engaging in these, in these, uh, uh, behaviors? How, how does the public, um, understand cannabis now versus what they used to think of, what cannabis was? Those are different educational benchmarks that we've talked about. So a lot of that is going to come from the outreach, as well as then, on the other side, we're going to be talking about drug interactions, and making sure that people understand what it is that they're trying so that they don't have a harmful interaction, how much is too much, how much is enough? I hope that helps to answer your question.
It does, I, it's just as something I would assume that, you know, we can work with going forward on the outreach piece of it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilor, you also have counsel?
Yes.
Councilor O'Malley.
Thank you, um, I, I like quirky buildings, and this is a quirky building. Can you please describe what's going on? So you have, is it three different parcels and one building?
No, it's one building. It's one building that has been added on over the years and changed in various ways. So there is an original building, I did this research at the very beginning, there's an original building, then there's a couple of different things that were done. We plan on redoing the facade, you can see that the facade is much different than what it is now, um, we're going to be-
So this is just a portion of the building that we're seeing?
That's correct. So, but this, along the parking lot, is very different than what it is today. So we'll be unifying the look of the building.
And the, the rest of the building, um, is going to be vacant?
Uh, yes. Under the rules that we can only be, it can only be a, um, a single use.
Understood. And, and, and just so I understand, how many parcels is it, is it three parcels?
No, it's one parcel.
It's one, because, okay, because the records I was looking at show it looks like it's three different parcels, and then there's a, there's an alleyway in the back.
That's correct.
What is the use of that alleyway?
Uh, well, currently it's being used by people parking-
Not now, but in the future.
It's, it's going to be, uh, we're going to be doing landscaping along the, um, the, the, the bike path and doing some shielding, so that, that area will be, will be able to, let's see if we can get to that slide. Right there, you can see that there's parking that'll be along that back portion.
And, and the, the area that I'm talking about is on the left? Right? Here, I'll get up, I'll show you.
That's not the parcel, I would think.
That goes, that's the other building. That's not our property.
You don't own that? No.
That's correct. Thank you for, uh, pointing it out, I, I was unclear, but we do not own that.
That's like a garage, right?
Yes, that's, uh, that used to be-
That's not your property.
That's not.
Okay, thank you.
The buildings have a, a zero-clear wall.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President, I apologize for not thinking of this before when I already had the floor. I'm just really interested in the partnership with Fenway Health, can you elaborate on that? It wasn't clear from the slide, um, that's really interesting to me.
Do we have, uh, Mary, you want to talk about Fenway?
I'm not sure what details you want to know, we just have a letter of intent that we have been, um, we're going to be working with them, that's our outreach partner, which is mandatory-
Yep.
-with the state, and, um, we are going to, we've worked out, you know, basically a contract of percentages, et cetera.
Okay.
Um, space usage within the building that can be dedicated to the, to them and the community, um, so that's a, it's a mandatory partnership-
Yep.
-that all of us have to do, um, and considering the background of our company, and that some of the members of the LLC ha- already had close relationships, um, we thought, and have done different charity events to help raise money for them, we thought it was the, a really good working relationship to get.
Well, I, I love that, um, I'm fully supportive of this proposal anyway, but that particularly stuck out to me, so kudos to you for that.
Well, thank you. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Linehan. Counselor McDonald, thank you for being patient. You, you clicked it, Counselor McDonald. We got to work on that, Counselor. You got it, ready?
I did the same thing, Counselor.
Thank you, Counsel, thank you, Counselor President. Um, just very quickly, I just wanted to say, good, you know, good job. This is a really great application, and I can tell it's been, I, I'm a new counselor, I can tell this has been a road. Uh, and so I see just the thought that's gone into addressing these concerns that have been raised through the stages of the process. The council maintains way more control of this type of permitting than probably just about any other type of permit in the city. In this case, it's led to a really thoughtful proposal about the land usage and the community involvement. And so I just, I really appreciate that. I also, um, the partnership with Fenway Health stuck out to me as, as, as a really, uh, great opportunity. So it'll be my privilege to support it, but I just wanted to say, good job.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Counselor McDonald. Let me see if there's any other lights, any other counselors going once, going twice. I guess that leaves me, Counselor. So the only thing I'm going to do is I'm going to put a little surprise on you. Uh, I support the initiative, but there's one ask. Uh, one thing that I can unequivocally say, and I think my councils can, can certainly, um, attest to this, is, um, first thing is the city of Malden is, is a tough place, uh, to, to transverse in any time of the day, unless you're walking. Uh, and even that sometimes could be, could be a long haul. Uh, traffic is always going to be an issue in Malden. We cannot certainly get around that, but we can certainly help mitigate it. Uh, one of my requests is, is something that Assist the City has done, and I'm going to start doing it, not with just this proposal, I actually want to put in our ordinance, is that six months after this opens up, you'd be willing to do a traffic study. Now, that's not going to impact, you're going to have it, but I think for our benefit, we can see what a, what a traffic looks like after something opens up. And then there is some certain development going around. I know it's a cost, but I think it just helps us, certainly myself. I have nothing against traffic. Is it, is it Megan? What's your, what's your name? I'm sorry.
Rebecca.
Rebecca. No offense, but I don't believe traffic studies because there's never been an impact that I've seen, right? They come in and they always say that there's never been an impact. What I want to start doing is before and after, you'll have the license, but I think it gives us the ability, uh, as a council, and certainly help us mitigate, whether it be the bike path, walking ability, or just where we put, you know, you know, parking is a premium in the city right now. So for me, that is certainly going to be something I want to look at. So if, if you're willing to do that, would be my, my, um, I would, I would put that as a consideration. I need a, I need a second on that. I'll wait for, I'll, I'll, you know, thank you, Counselor, but I'll let the ward council do it. So Counselor Crowe, I'll take a vote. So on my, I'm going to ask for a, I'm going to require a traffic study six months after they open. So if it takes them six months to open up, it'll be a year after they open, just to see the impact. That's right, I cannot make the motion. I, I can't. So, yeah, absolutely, Counselor, that's right. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McDonald.
Um, I just wondered if this, do you all want a second to talk about this?
No, I, you, you, I...
I just, I just had to, and I was expecting this.
Oh, okay. We're, we're, you don't need to take a vote. We'll voluntarily place it on the, um, initiative. I appreciate that. Thank you. So I don't need to vote? Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions? We do have, we do have, um, a couple of letters to read to the record, but I do want to take the opportunity to publicly acknowledge that myself, I know it's hard to believe, and the Counselor went to high school together. Now, I'm not saying I age better, but I certainly, I think I've aged better, right, Counselor? Thank you, Counselor President. You're welcome. I appreciate that. Yeah, he does. Counselor Winslow, hold on one second. Counselor Winslow.
Just a point of information, we're going to have the public hearing. I, I do want to make some motion related to connection of the trail, so, I, I mean, I, I prefer to hear the, the public response and then make that motion, so...
Okay, we can wait. But they voluntarily put that one in, so that's fine. And then we have some letters to, to read in anyways. Before we take one, I wasn't taking the vote.
No, okay, yeah, great, great, thanks, great.
I did. Public hearing in favor. So if those are in favor, read them. If there's any against this, we'll wait for that portion.
Dear Council, Council members, as a former Malden resident and business owner, I fully support petition 202-22 to grant a permit to DMS Trinity LLC for the establishment of retail marijuana establishment. Malden has always been a city that supports communities from all backgrounds, lifting small businesses and enabling immigrants to live, to live the American dream. This will do that by bringing minority-owned businesses into the city in an industry where they themselves have been historically disenfranchised. By approving 202-22, you will be, bring economic development to the city and promote diversity within the business community. Furthermore, furthermore, by affirming this permit, the council will provide additional means to residents opting to purchase legal cannabis. An additional retail establishment will foster competition while continuing to push out black market sales, reducing crime and youth drug use. Please support this permit. It is the right decision for the city of Malden and its residents. Timothy Lopes from Tri-Montane Real Estate LLC, 22 Butler Street, Malden.
So, Mr. Clerk, if you could just don't mind, I want to interrupt you, uh, with that. Uh, I, I did make a, a quick error in terms of, I'm going to ask anybody who's, I, I apologize. We had a couple of public hearings, so I, I mixed them together. If anybody's here in favor, to speak in favor of this petition, uh, I want to take them before the letters, I apologize. So Counselor O'Malley reminded me, just in case somebody doesn't want to stay the entire length of the meeting, but if there's anybody who wants to speak in favor, please come to the podium, state your name and address to the record.
Hi.
How you doing?
My name is Rebecca Sarah. I live at 10 Adams Street in Medford, and, um, I'm in favor of this petition. Uh, we haven't had to, we haven't had any dispensaries open in Medford yet either, so, you know, we're like waiting for that to happen. And the closest one to me is in Davis Square that has no parking, so this is already leaps and bounds ahead of anything that I've seen or been to so far. And I've been a medical cardholder since they became legal, so I just want to say that I think this is a great plan. I love supporting businesses that support the community and like, all, all the things that they represent are just everything that I believe in, so that's pretty much it.
I have to remind the clerk to re-silence his phone during the meeting. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next order, uh, next, uh, next, somebody, anybody speaking, willing to come, uh, speaking in, you threw me off, Counselor. Anybody, uh, who wants to speak in favor of this petition, please come forward and state your name and address to the record?
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Spano. I live in Dorchester, Massachusetts. I'm also an attorney, and I've worked in, out of the Boston Juvenile Court. I've seen firsthand how, uh, minorities and communities of color are disproportionately impacted by marijuana. Um, I jumped at this, um, opportunity to support both my friends, um, but also members of the LGBT community, minority-owned business, women-owned business. I think they're the ones that were disproportionately impacted by marijuana in the first place. And the fact that they're now able to open a business, I would, am full support of that, and that's why I'm here. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Again, anybody willing to speak in favor, please come up, state your name and address to the record? Okay. If anybody changes their mind, let me know. Clerk, continue reading.
Dear Clerk Lucy, please allow, allow this letter to be read in support of DMS Trinity's application for marijuana establishment to be located at 36 Charles Street. As part of a family business that has been in Malden for 40 years, I have had the privilege to meet residents and business owners from numerous ethnicities and backgrounds. It is a community that our business has been proudly served in, and in return, the city has embraced us, creating a wonderful working relationship. I have personally met the applicants of DMS Trinity and am extremely confident they will create, create the same synergy with the city of Malden. In addition to a minority and woman-owned establishment, DMS will employ a multinational and inclusive group of individuals that will enhance Malden's diverse cultural landscape. It is also a tremendous benefit that DMS ownership lives locally and is not an outer state conglomerate who has no ties to Malden or its nearby communities. I'm certain that DMS Trinity is offering everything the city of Malden is seeking in a new business owner and support their application to open a marijuana establishment. If you have any further questions, please feel free to call me at 781-324-6686. David Marvitz, President Malden Trans, Inc. Mr. Lucy, this letter is in support of application for cannabis retail store at 36 Charles Street by DMS Trinity LLC. As a person who suffers from cerebral palsy, it is important for my community to have access to a cannabis store that is close to where I live. This location is extremely convenient for me to take the orange line from Community College to Malden Center. Although I am a Charles, although I am from Charles Town, this location works best for me in terms of accessibility by public transport. As someone with cerebral palsy, who also works in the insurance field for decades, I recognize through multiple lenses that there, the health benefits of marijuana. As a woman, I believe in women-run and women-owned businesses. As well, I, as, I am a person often marginalized by society due to my disability. I recognize and support the gay and minority ownership of the, this enterprise. I believe for all these reasons listed above, you should feel, all feel confident in voting affirmatively for the application. Thank you, Caroline Sutter, 33 Saxville Street, Charles Town, Mass. Dear Clerk Lucy, this letter is to support DMS Ri, DS, DMS Trinity's application for cannabis retail store located at 36 Charles Street. As a regular to Malden, I believe it's important for there to be a facility like this one in the area. Certainly having one near where I live would be beneficial to me and others who seek to use cannabis-related products to medically treat for other relief of pain and other conditions like Parkinson's. I believe DMS Trinity are the right organization to provide the service to Malden and nearby communities. And I have known the owners of DMS Trinity's for many years, and they live locally and are professional in all they do. If you have any questions, please feel free to call me. Sincerely, Mark...
Murphy. What is it? Mark Murphy, the top. Mark Murphy, oh, Mark, I'll talk to him, yeah. Mark Murphy. Is that it? That's it. Okay. I'll ask one more time. Anybody here willing to, uh, want to speak in favor of this petition, please come forward, state your name and address to the record? Seeing none and hearing none, I deem that portion of the meeting closed. Yep?
I'm sorry, Counselor. Uh, I'd like to, uh, be against you, please?
Yep, I'm going to open up that portion right now, sir. Yep. No problem. Anybody now, we're going to go to the, to the sentencing side. Anybody who is wishing to speak against this petition, please come forward and state your name and address to the record. Sir? Yeah, let me just turn your mic on one second, sir. I shut it off early, it's just a background noise.
Anthony Salini, 17 Charles Street. Have an insurance agent for 40 years, uh, right across from the establishment. Great presentation. Um, family has been in for 100 years, small business, uh, true small business. Um, I came in, I really don't care what goes in. Um, if they want to go in, into Malden, I, I think it's your duty as the, uh, voters put in. I don't live, I live up in North Reading, uh, should let them do what they want. Um, but sitting here and listening to the presentation brought up some major concerns. As a small business owner, uh, someone who is directly across the street from them, uh, someone who comes in and drives in, uh, six to seven days per week into this great city of Malden, um, I heard everyone talking about parking, about traffic, and it's not a problem. It's not a problem. That's right, it's not a problem. We don't have a parking problem in front of my business, in the center of, of Malden. We have no parking. I cannot get a parking space in front of my business in the morning at 17 Charles Street. So we don't have a parking problem. We have no parking. Okay? We don't have a traffic issue. We have a massive, massive traffic problem to get into where you're going to be putting this establishment. Okay? What used to take me from Mount Vernon Street, right down the street, I don't know, I haven't measured it, a quarter mile, half a mile, used to take me three to four minutes to get there to 17 Charles Street, Malden. Traffic is horrendous. And you cannot tell me that putting in this business, which I've seen in Melrose and such, needing police and security and lines out the door, that it will not increase traffic 100 times. Okay? 15 minutes from three minutes to go a quarter mile where you want to put this business, let alone that Charles and Main. There's no parking in that place. I can't park there. I get tickets. I've got an hour parking. I grab it from my four employees, and I take their cars because I pay their tickets, and I move them every two hours. There is no parking in that area. The traffic is unbelievable. When I do get into Charles and Main, which is very, very rare, the other day, it took me four minutes to get out of Charles and Main. The light kept turning, that the road, the people, the traffic was just back. No one would let me in. So I'm waiting. The light turns again on Charles and Main. I continue to wait. They keep going, I continue to wait. Okay? We've got a major problem with this area. I don't care where you put it. I'm totally for them. Great people, very impressive. Go for it, but put it with someplace where it's not going to cause a traffic jam. Someone earlier said from the council, there's 40 employees. Great, I got four. Well, maybe you'll consider having them go into the parking lot. My staff won't go to the parking lot. They won't go around the corner for Dunkin' Donuts. The board should be saying it's a requirement before you even consider this. That's what you require of me. If I were coming in front of the board with this great proposal, you would require them to go into the parking space. Okay? I'll tell you about traffic. Okay? We don't need this young lady to stand up and tell us about traffic. What we need, and another thing, excuse me, let me backtrack, I'm sorry, but doing a traffic study six months after they've opened up? If I was a CEO of any major corporation, they would have just fired me and thrown me out the door for that suggestion. I will tell you what traffic is like. Okay? It's just Main Street, I'm all for the bike roads and this and that. I just came, uh, the, the street parallel here. There's a bike road and, like, lane in the middle of the road. To the right of that is a bus lane. Route 60 is now in half. Main Street and Route 60. The traffic, what is taking me now, 15 minutes to get from Mount Vernon to my business, is going guaranteed in the next three or four months without this great company, is going to be an hour, not an hour, half an hour for me to get to Malden. I don't have parking. I have no place to go. Okay? If anyone is an employee, you guys aren't employees, but you may own your own business, there is no way those 40 employees are going to be anywhere but in those 25 parking spaces. It's just normal, common nature. Where does that leave me? I don't have a parking space. In my, my, the Salini, lack of an empire, or not an empire, has paid taxes to this beautiful city for 100 years. Great company, they can't go there. It shouldn't even be considered. I'm very disappointed as a taxpayer, as someone who's been in here, hearing you all have already made your decision, saying you're all for this, when this is a public meeting. I haven't even spoken yet. Okay? 2016, they were putting a building next to my building. Let me read you some, some paragraphs from the planning board that day that got shut down. This is five years ago, when traffic was 100th as bad as it is in this area now. And you're telling me with this great increase in traffic, we're putting in a cannabis place that is going to double that traffic even more? Don't worry about the parking. Don't worry about the traffic. No, I'm a small business guy. I don't have that money. I looked into it. I don't care. Let them move in. I looked into it when it was first voted in. You're looking at a million, two million, three million you need in financial. God bless them. I don't have that money. I can't put a helicopter pad and come and buy helicopter to avoid the traffic. Okay? What was said five years ago, I'm quite sure the people were different, but in this same community, they said there was a major, major problem where you think you're going to be putting this cannabis thing, a major problem five years ago. And you're all intelligent people, and thank you for your service and your volunteer time. Okay? But it's 100 times worse than it was five years ago. You can't tell me that by mediating, that you're doing things to mediating. No, it's a, it's a mess. You can't keep adding to it. Put it somewhere where, where it can go. Come in, please. I welcome you with open arms. Have nothing against the cannabis community. Okay? If it helps the minorities, but putting it where you're saying you're going to put it is crazy. What Malden said, what the planning board told us here, is there is existing traffic congestion on the surrounding roadways and failing levels of service, failing level of service. of service. No infrastructure, no lights at intersections adjacent to or nearby the subject property. The property we're talking about is right across from their property when this was being worked on. And the proposal will exaggerate, excuse me, these existing conditions. Substantially detrimental impact. Detrimental impact, I repeat again, five years ago, when the issue was nowhere as bad it is now, council people, on the neighborhood. Okay? And I'm not the only one, as you look at me up here, I'm stuck in traffic in the morning, there's 50 cars in front of me and 30 behind me. All of these people are stuck in the same traffic. If you were just talking about me, who cares about Anthony Salini? He's one, this is a major problem for your constituents. And you're throwing it under the rug? And its fiscal impacts and increased demands on city infrastructure, which we don't have. We're narrowing the roads, we're putting in bike paths. Traffic is going to get 10 times worse in the next six months because of the decisions that the city has made. And that's fine, if that's what you want, but don't extend it. That's why we have you up there, to make the right decisions. You said that you don't want to add to it, that you want to mitigate it. Well, then mitigate it. This is the wrong location for this place, not because they're bad people, not because it's a bad business, not because they shouldn't have the right to open up a business. I totally believe in all those things, but putting them in the center of Malden, which is the most congested area in the whole city, is crazy.
All right, Mr. Salini, I don't want to stop you.
No, I'm all done. Thank you, thank you.
I think we got the drift, you're against it, certainly. Any comments from the council?
I'm not against it.
No, the traffic, I understand, yeah.
I'm against the fact that they're gonna make a traffic situation which is unbearable 10 times worse. And as they said, and then I'm done, and thank you for all your time, that this proposal, as five years ago, is the same thing, and I hope you take these last two sentences to heart, the proposal will be more detrimental to the neighborhood and to the interest of the common good of the city of Malden.
Thank you, Mr. Salini.
Thank you very much.
Counsel Siminelli, you clicked the button, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, you know, I'm gonna say it. This is something that's continuously going on here in the city of Malden, which, look, good point, well made. We are starting to hinder our businesses in this community with all of the narrowing of the roads that we're doing. I was in a meeting this morning with a few folks, talking about doing some street and infrastructure work going on in the city. You know, and we're a very densely populated community, no doubt about it. But it seems like there's no plan, and I know we're kind of getting off the beaten path here on the subject matter of why these folks are here before us tonight, but since it's been brought up, and everybody seems to be burying their head in the sand when it comes to this issue, this morning it took me quite a while to get from one end of the city to the other, and then again this afternoon. And the people out there, our constituency, are complaining every time I see them, everywhere. What is going on with Malden with this traffic pattern on Route 60? Why are we shutting down a state highway, mind you, that has always been two lanes and bottlenecking it down to one? It doesn't really make any sense to me on why we continue to do this. There was no traffic plan in place to see what the outcome would be, a traffic study of what it would be in place. Now, I wasn't here as a city council when this thing was implemented, but I'm here now, and I am gonna take this fight to some of my colleagues that are sitting up here today because I did give their opportunity to see how it would go in my community and along the Route 60 corridor. And it's a mess, a complete mess. People can't get through, people can't get by. I've got people in my neighborhood, wanna talk about low-income neighborhood in this community, that people, kids that walk to school. I have kids trying, I have people avoiding the lights on Route 60, cutting down my neighborhood, flying through so they can make up for the time that they lost because the traffic on Route 60 is from going into Revere through Linden, all the way going towards Medford. It's gridlock. And it's time that we start to do something. And I know, again, you know, in fairness to my, some of my colleagues that I'm sure are gonna speak on this issue.
Counsel Siminelli, I know you're passionate about this, I just want to make sure that we don't get off track with.
Well, I think you go.
No, 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 and I agree. I just want to make sure that, I don't want to have quid pro quo.
All right, good, good, good. Yep, I got you, Mr. President. Again, I guess it's for another night to argue this issue, but I am ready to argue this issue because, for one, my neighborhood and constituency and the people that I represent in the city of Malden are not happy about what is happening out there and how they are so congested. What it's doing now is, from what I'm hearing here tonight, is that it's having an impact on the businesses that are out there or these buildings that want to open up businesses that we're not gonna allow them because there's a traffic issue that shouldn't be there in the first place. We should be helping traffic flow better for our business community in this city. And we haven't taken them in consideration, as far as I'm concerned, by, you know, shrinking down these roadways to make bike paths. And I look at, I'm not against bikes, I like bikes, my brother rides a bike, my family roll bike, but, I mean, you know, I haven't seen that many, for one.
All right, counsel, can I just bring you back?
Yeah, bring me back. Somebody better bring me back.
Worthy debate, I just want to make sure in fairness to the group, I know you drove bikes, that's nice. Counselor Hayes.
Yes, thank you. I wasn't actually going to speak on this because I was very much in favor. It sounds like you did all the right things, all the right steps, but once the parking was brought up, I did want to ask, I was actually going to vote no to the parking study, so, but then you offered it up, so, okay. But I wanted to speak on that, that I'm not sure what the expectation is after the parking study is done. Six months from now, will they be expected to financially be like in a burden to fix anything, or like what is this, what is this study hoping to get? We might not have an answer to that, but that's why I was going to vote no until I understood exactly what the study was going to do, and then what would be the after effect? Would you be on the hook to fixing things?
Do you want to speak, counsel? I don't want to speak, if you'd come on.
Yes.
My understanding, the council, thank you for the question, my understanding is, and speaking as an attorney, nothing could change, but it's information that the city needs to continue to gather. I think that, I agree with counsel president, I think you need to continue to gather this information in a community and amass more understanding of how traffic patterns are changed by these businesses. My clients are gonna do everything to mitigate, and I understand the business across the street, I understand his frustration. My business is also right there in the neighborhood. I am 500 feet away from this, and I struggle with traffic as well, being a resident and a business owner. But businesses can't stop, right? So let's gather information, let's figure out mitigation ways that we as a community can build on this. And that's why we agreed to the traffic study six months later, because we're gonna get more information, and maybe the next time we look at a mitigation, we can tweak it a little bit more as to how it would be worked through.
Thank you. I know that most, most small businesses, that would be a cost burden for them, so I appreciate that you're going to do it, and hopefully we will learn something from it. But like Counselor Espatafor was saying, sometimes the studies, especially if they're done specifically by someone who's working for the business, I'm not sure what we'll learn, but I'm glad, thank you again for offering that up anyway.
So Counselor Hayes, I'll just jump in. So that is their attorney?
Yes.
Great guy, great, they seem like a great group of people, but the council has the ability to bring anybody before us who has a license at any time, regardless if it was a cannabis or Dunkin' Donuts, and if there was that much of a traffic problem, the city can help work, we could require them to get a detail. I'm not saying that, the point is, there are the ability within this council, is if you have a license in this community and this causing a nuisance or a traffic problem, we have the ability to work with them to mitigate. It happened with the Dunkin' Donuts right across the street, down the street, when they put the drive-through in, and that caused chaos in the street, right near Hill Street, and they worked with them, they had to bring the police in, but they were able to figure out mitigation. So my point is, I think we'll both work together, we both have the ability to sit down and mitigate that to make sure. But this is, as Counselor Siminelli so eloquently put, it is a larger discussion for larger day in terms of the traffic.
Okay, thank you. I would be in favor of, if it was a problem, to come back.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Let me see who's next, Counselor Crowe.
Excuse me, thank you, Mr. President. Actually, I agree with Mr. Salani, it is, traffic is a bear, which is why I've been trying to look at on Route 60, a left-hand turn to take some of the pressure off for Charles Street. Like I said, we did do it on Canal Street, but the city engineer said if we did it on Middlesex, it would really back it up. So I do think, I really do like the idea of having a traffic study, again, six months later, and they've already been willing to say, say that they would work with me on some mitigation. So I think this would be really interesting to have, this is the first one, to say it's, we're gonna do it six months later, and then maybe we'll reserve the right to kind of look at it and revisit what that mitigation might be. Because right now, if, you know, we could decide what things might work, but at least if we have the information and working with them, you know, further down the road, I think is a better idea. Traffic is tough, Charles Street's always been tough. I think when Mr. Salani had talked about what happened five years ago, that was when there was gonna be over 100 apartments right at the building that he was talking about, and I think that's with, it was gonna be mixed development, so with the larger footprint. So I do think traffic is an issue, it's, believe me, it's always on my mind. And, but I think working with them to try to see how we can, we can make this better is, it'd be beneficial to everybody.
Counselor, if I may, just one point of clarification, just because it was brought up.
Yeah, go ahead, counsel.
Never have 40 employees on site at the same time. These are, we're looking to have the hours filled, and it's, we're well, we're gonna be open well more than 80 hours a week based on the numbers we've shown you, so you could tell, just breaking it down, how many employees on a regular basis will be in the building.
Thank you, counsel. Yeah, the only thing I would just say, if you're gonna speak, just come to the mic so we have it into the record.
So I've gone to a few dispensaries, and I sat around just to watch how like, you know, cars coming in and out. So from my experience, I've gone to a few in Chelsea and around, and there's never that many cars that is gonna cause an issue that there's a lot of cars there. So people usually, they order ahead, it's five minutes, they come in, in and out, so it's not something that people are gonna be parked there for hours. It's very fast, and it's never, was never more than 10 cars, nothing crazy. So I've sat down there for an hour to watch what's going on, going over weekends, rush hours in the morning, after business hours, and it was never a crazy amount of cars coming in. So that was just another thing.
Counselor Crowe, you still have the floor? Okay, you're done. Counselor Winslow. Yeah, hold on, I'll take counsel, my screen for some reason minimized, and I could, there you go.
Okay, yeah, I know, you know, I know traffic and parking and transportation in general is a big issue in the city, and that's why since I came on the council, I was big advocate to have a transportation planner because all the communities around us had that. And so we are working on plans, and I was gonna save this for personal privilege, but we have a transit action plan survey out there right now. So we have, we're working to put together the things. On Broadway, we have money from the gaming commission to look at that corridor, I was just talking to our transportation planner today, he's putting in a grant to the gaming commission to get, look at all our traffic signals being upgraded. Just talking to Counsel O'Malley, one of the problems with the Route 60 project is our traffic signals are antiquated. So it's, and the thing is, it costs a ton of money, so the challenge is, we have to meet standards. So I just want to say, I was gonna talk, if you look at your emails, we are asking the community to answer these questions. We already have 500 people, so we know it's a big issue, it's a hard thing, but we are putting in place the public process to actually come up with a plan, which we haven't had. There's been so much frustration over this, but the way we try to go forward, there's never gonna be a perfect thing, but we, now we're putting into place some of the things to actually, rather than react to everything, and to actually have a plan and have that conversation. So just tell your constituents about this transit action plan, that's one key component. And like I say, we're gonna have more conversations, and it's great we have a transportation planner that many of you all supported, and we continue to support to help us look at the bigger picture and take advantage of the multimillion-dollar grants that are coming down through the federal infrastructure bill. So that's, I just, that's all, so thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Winslow. Counsel Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to continue with the public hearing to see if anyone else would like to speak against it, and then at the end of that, I'd like to hear from Ms. Romero and understand the planning board's recommendation.
Okay, thank you, that's a great suggestion. So moving right along, anybody here willing to speak, anybody here wanting to speak against this petition, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Is it on?
It is on.
My name is Lindsay, 260 Main Street, apartment 205 Modern, Massachusetts. There are four things that I want to respond after I listened to tonight's presentation. The third thing is about the safety. The presentation only talks about the safety and the security of the building, but not, but only, only mentioned once, just one sentence, about the safety around that building. So if you don't know where 260 Main Street is, that is the first apartment building when turning right from Charles Street to Main Street. So it's super close to, you know, 36 Charles Street. So I am really concerned about the safety outside of that property. Like, you talked about, you talked about you were going to hire like a security guard in that property, but how about outside of it? So I am, like, your business hours from 9:00 to 9:00 PM. So that's pretty late, and I have to say that in my apartment building, there's a lot of family that have little kids that they go to bed really early. So how about the, you know, the noise that caused from there, and, you know, just a lot of like those type of things that I really concerned about safety? And then you only mentioned that you will, you will discuss with the police for the plan. So to me, that means currently you don't have a plan, a plan to make sure that we're all safe around that area. So this is really important to me. Second is the environment. So just a background, I know what.
Did you say the environment, just, I'm taking notes. Did you say second, the environment, is that what you said?
Yeah, the second is the environment. So I am not really against marijuana use. Just a little background that I graduated from Boston University with master degree of science for forensic sciences, so, and concentrated on toxicology. So I know what marijuana does. So there's a lot of benefit for marijuana, so it's okay to have that. However, there, we cannot avoid that there's odor with smoking, especially smoking marijuana. And I have to say that I have a friend who lives on Main Street, I forgot the street number, but it's really close to YMCA. But because, because there is a lot of people smoking marijuana in that building, she is really sensitive to the odor. I am sensitive to that odor as well, and a lot of people also sensitive to that, like people who have asthma. I don't know if there's any impact to that. So if people really don't like, like my friend, she eventually have to move out. So when we're talking about, you know, the money, the tax money, you know, finance, like going into modern city, how about people moving out? Have we considered the people who actually moved out because of that? So we, I do, like, my friend does that. So when we consider about the tax money, the finance going into modern city, we also need to think about the balance. If we encourage that, the only reason I, the reason I kind of want to mention it is because from what I know, this might be the. because from what I know, this might be the first one or the only one so far, right, that we talked about in Modern, having a.
It's the third.
The third one? All right. So how about the people who live around Modern? Would they go in into Modern and cause like, you know, the traffic was the last point that I kind of wanted to talk about. So, you know, with all these people going in, I have to say, there are also people going out for Modern because of that. The last, sorry, the third point that I want to say is the usage control. You kind of mentioned that you want to educate people how to use it, not, like, we know it was a controlled substance, and right now the law says that, okay, we allow people to use it for recreational use. However, we can't, we can't just say that, oh, we, we will, there's no, like, using marijuana, definitely you are going to get addictive to it. We can't say, you know, with the law, now we can avoid this issue. So when we're talking about the usage control, the education, how do we ensure that teenager will not get, you know, addicted to it before they really realize what it does? And also, there is not, for me, I think, right now there's low law, it's not like the use of Sudafed, that every time when you go to pharmacies, you purchase it, you need to show your ID and they will count how many times that you purchased it. I don't think you are going to do that for your store because you are not counting how much, you know, person A is going to purchase within a week. So are you going to have, you know, controls like that? And what if, what if a person's keep purchasing it? You know, what's the impact, right? So the last thing is for traffic. Your, your building is about 4,000 square feet, right? So kind of doing a simple math, math, if you just using 2,000 square feet for your warehouse to keep, you know, all your store, stock, you probably still have 2,000 square feet. And then you have 25 parking spot and you set 40 employee, I'm sure that not 40 employee to stay in the same, you know, at the same time, because, you know, we're going to, I think that you probably have different amount of people every shift. But, but people, you have your employee, you have your customer, and then during your presentation, you kind of mentioned that you encourage people to, you know, use bike, use bus, use, you know, public transportation. But all you can do is to encourage them to use this public transportation. You can force them to do it. So, you know, this amount of people is going to go to that little space, it's really tiny space with 25 parking spots. And I came from a city like Hong Kong, if you don't know where Hong Kong is or what kind of Hong Kong city is, it's, it's kind of like a New York city. People there, like, it's really crowded, and then people there like to use, I used to like using public transportation because it's really convenient, there's no way you can find a parking spot if you drive there. So pretty much like New York City. However, I moved to here for more than 10 years. I changed my habit. I don't, I like to drive, even though I just going to Stop &amp; Shop from Charles Street because I don't know how much grocery that I'm going to purchase. If I'm purchasing a lot, if I'm buying a lot, I'm not going to carry them from Stop &amp; Shop to Main Street. It's too much for me. I might be able to carry them when I was in Hong Kong, but not anymore. So this is the habit that people have here. Even though it's really close distance, they, they prefer driving instead of taking bus.
The term you're looking for is lazy.
Thank you. I try to be, I try to be polite because I, I am, I changed my habit too. I said that to myself.
I'm including myself in that description, so don't think I'm pointing that out to you.
So, so, you know, you kind of like talking about, that's a really busy area that you have Charles Street, Main Street, I think that's called Middlesex, right? That street that kind of intersect with Charles Street? It's really busy area. So even though you says that people maybe already purchased, like, placed an order and just pick, pick up and leave, but still have a lot of footprint over there. People comes in and goes, like, you know, you have no control how, like, people turn left, it probably cause, people could stay there for forever if they were turning left. So, you know, this type of thing, I think it's, they're very concerning to me. And plus, you know, thinking about that, I just feel like, when you said you have a lot of different option, commute option, I just feel like you didn't plan for the worst and you only hope for the best. You just hope that people will take the public transportation. A lot of people will do this, but you didn't plan that how about everybody's driving, right? When we plan, we should plan the worst, not hope for the best. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. I'm not going to ask the council to rebut that. If you want to, you go. But I would like to go through the rest if there's anybody against it, so we don't have to come up and down. So anybody who wants to go up and speak against the petitioner, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Anybody who wants to speak against the petitioner, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Going once, going twice, and for the final time, if there's anybody who wants to speak against the petitioner, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none and hearing none, I deem that portion of the public hearing closed. Lynn, I believe that's your name. I will say a couple of things. I don't know if the petitioner wants to answer. One is, one is, they're not growing any cannabis, there's no manufacturing there, so the odor from that should not be there, they should not be consuming on the property. That's still against the Commonwealth of Massachusetts right now, so they cannot consume there. So if they are doing that, that is against our licenses in the state, like state, the Commonwealth. So that odor, where we can't control it inside somebody's private house or apartment, we can't control it in a business because it's not for the law. So there's a couple of things I think we can control from that perspective. Security and safety, I'll leave it to them. Traffic, I think we've all certainly understood that challenge there regardless. I believe that that's one of the reasons I want that mitigation plan, to show what that's like. But if the petitioner wants to go up and speak about security, they can do so. If not, you want to speak? Yeah.
I just want, I just want to make sure that it's clear that she realizes that this isn't, that we have already been through three public hearings, and that tonight was intentionally a shortened version of everything to make the night go faster, whether that's happened or not. So our security plan is far more extensive than what we presented tonight, and that was an intentional decision to do it that way. So if she wants to go back and look at the previous public hearings, those are documented. Our security plan is far more outlined in those presentations, and we're also happy to provide any resident, any of that information if that's a concern for them.
Okay, so you have that, Lynn? Lynn, the counselor, Mr. Dimaco, I can show you where he lives. I can show you where his office is. They're all in walking distance. We can drive together. And you heard from the owner, you'd be more than happy to take her up on that, okay? So I certainly don't want to make sure that communication stays there, and I'm not letting the council get away with it. Your ward council is right there, right there with her hand up, all right? All right. Next portion of the hearing, so the public portion, the public hearing is closed. So we will be taking no more testimony, whether it's for or against. That's the purpose of the public hearing, so I please respect that, understand that. Is now the ability for the council to deliberate. I believe, but Counsel Murphy did want to have Michelle Romero in. Did you ask the bill inspector as well?
I think he'll probably fall into it. I just want to.
Okay, so Michelle Romero, if you could please come up to the podium, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Michelle Romero, city planner. You had, do you have specific questions or did you want me to just give the planning board recommendation or?
Read the planning board recommendation. I'm particularly concerned about their, concerned about the parking.
Okay, so the planning board reviewed this back in March and issued to you an advisory recommendation. They did not hold a public hearing, it was just discussed at a public meeting. They reviewed all the plans and materials that was submitted by the petitioner. I will note, well, I'll give you the recommendation first. The recommendation of the planning board was unanimous, nine in favor, none opposed. The recommendation to the city council is that the petition be denied due to the severely gross parking deficiency, 44 spaces or 85%, which renders the proposal more detrimental to the neighborhood and not in the interest of the common good. The plans that the planning board reviewed have been modified slightly, I'll note. The plans that the planning board reviewed listed the entire building being in use, so the full 13,000 square feet, which is what was proposed in the licensing process and in the special permit application. So the full 13,000 square feet of the building would be used for retail establishment, marijuana establishment for retail sales. During the course of the review, it was mentioned by the petitioner that space that was labeled storage would not be used, it would actually be maintained as vacant. At another point, it was then mentioned that that might have a future use, as some, I believe one of the plans said marijuana micro grow space for the dispensary on site. So the planning board reviewed what was presented to it, which was 13,000 square feet for retail sales of marijuana. And that was, you know, regardless of how the spaces were labeled, the whole building will be subject to the special permits. So the parking deficiency comes from looking at that, 13,000 square feet times four per thousand, you come up with 52 spaces being required. Now, because they had received some of the additional information, we tried to look at that and review that during the course of this. There are only eight parking spaces on site, eight. So the plan that you're seeing, and I think one of the councils mentioned, oh, it looks like it's three different parcels, it is three different parcels. The property line is not clear on this, but there's only eight parking spaces on site. Those are the eight that are in parallel or perpendicular to the building. The other spaces are on the other property, 100 Charles, and they're also not only just on another property, they're on a utility easement on another property. So when the planning board and through me requested, excuse me, I requested for the planning board in preparation, when we saw that they were proposing off-site parking, how we regulating this off-site parking? Because the ordinance says the parking has to be on-site for use of the building. So when we looked at it, we saw the eight spaces. And the petitioner said, no, we have rights to use that. They produced an agreement, which I believe you have copies of, or it was in the package, driveway agreement, it's called. So this regulates use of the driveway and also parking. The concern the planning board had was, per this agreement, it can be terminated for no reason at any time. So the access can be terminated and the parking can be terminated. So the planning board did not believe the spaces that were shown off-site, which are these 11 in the utility easement, were reliable to count on. So they were just looking at the eight spaces. There were four spaces in the building. The planning board had concerns with those because those are in the area of the building that's labeled loading and receiving. That's also where the bike parking is, and there was a concern about that. How can the bike parking for the public be in a private area of the building that's supposed to be for loading and receiving of shipments of the products and things? So that, and the planning board didn't believe that that was, you know, satisfactory to have public parking inside. Also, you can't have the parking in a loading area. So those four technically don't count. So the 25 they're coming up with and that they presented is really, in reality, only eight. Then there's the four inside that are in the loading area that impede the loading area, so per the zoning, you can't use those. And then there are the 11 off-site that aren't, again, in the planning board opinion, reliable because of the type of agreement. So the planning board had those concerns. The planning board did look at, okay, even if you counted the off-site parking, if say you had a better agreement than this driveway agreement, which can be terminated for any reason, they're still grossly deficient of the parking. So that's how the planning board came up with that recommendation. I will note that even though the planning board made that recommendation, the planning board realizes that you rely on the planning board to make recommendations for conditions. So they did, although they recommend denial based on the parking deficiency, they did also want to recommend to you that if you are able to find that the proposal conforms with the required controls and all the required findings, and you want to grant a special permit, they recommended conditions to any special permit. One of those conditions.
Can you read them off of the record?
Yes. And this is another point.
I know we have copies, but I think it's good for the entire council.
Hopefully you have copies.
Yep.
The first is the peer review, peer review of the petitioner's response to the traffic peer review comments dated February 25, 2022, and implement any recommended mitigation. When the petitioner first submitted the package, they submitted a traffic study. The city peer reviewer looked at it and wanted more information. What was missing from the traffic study were the surrounding intersections and the roadways and the volumes and the traffic and the, it was a, was a very preliminary type of study. It just basically gave data about the business that was going to be there. It didn't look at the surrounding network, which was something that got brought up by somebody that testified. When we, the board, and it wasn't this board, it was a different board, the planning board looked at this 1117 Charles Street project in 2016. They thoroughly looked at that corridor and all the intersections, and that gentleman was citing from the planning board decision, that was a project, a proposal for 100 units in a community health center that was denied by the planning board due to issues with traffic specifically. So that was thoroughly reviewed, peer reviewed, and that whole intersection looked at and all the abutting intersections. In this particular case, due to the timing and the processing of it, by the time the petitioner submitted its response to the comments to the peer reviewer, which was to provide actual traffic impact data so that you could determine, is there an impact on traffic? The planning board was already scheduled to review it and we were moving forward to process it. So that was never peer reviewed. That definitely should be peer reviewed because that is all really, that's the data that we didn't have when the petition was first filed. And that's looking at all those abutting intersections and the volumes and the crash rates and all that. So that is the first recommendation. That should definitely be done, and there very well could be mitigation that's recommended at all those abutting intersections. The second recommendation is that if you were to grant a special permit, that it would be subject to a condition. The second condition would be that the special permit authorizes marijuana retailer use of only 4,006 square feet of the first floor, as per plans, and specifically 1,794 square feet for retail space, 1,446 square feet for delivery area and indoor trash storage, and the remainder for accessory offices and common areas. All other areas of the building labeled storage totaling 9,018 square feet shall remain vacant and shall be used for no purpose whatsoever, including storage by the marijuana retailer, and any use or occupancy shall require an amendment to the special permit. So again, the planning board heard, you know, that the plans may be changing, they weren't going to use 9,000 square feet, but I do want to note, even looking at the 4,000 square feet, if only that's occupied, that requires 16 spaces. And again, they have eight on site that are fully within their control. And that's the whole point of having parking on site, it's within your control. Anything off-site is not within your control. So the other 9,000 square feet, even if they remain vacant, sooner or later, if they're used, would require parking. So I'm just throwing that out there to you. The different marijuana uses range from 1.2 spaces per thousand to four. So at minimum, it could require 11 spaces. At the maximum, it could require 36 spaces for use of that space. So if that petition comes back to you for use of that 9,000, so that's why the planning board wanted to make sure you knew that 9,000, you know, has a value and it will have a parking requirement attached to it that you should be aware of. Three, the third recommended condition was that the loading and delivery area may not be designated or used for parking. Four, install bicycle parking on site for four bicycles accessible to customers. Four, install bicycle parking on-site for four bicycles accessible to customers and employees. Five, repair or replace sidewalks, driveways, and perform necessary incidental work in addition to the properties to the satisfaction of the DBW director. Six, implement transportation demand measures regarding rideshare and parking attendant. And seven, all development shall be as per plans, including landscaping of the northwest portion of the lot, except as modified by these conditions. The next conditions, eight through sixteen, are required for any special permit that you issue. I don't know if you want me to read those into the record, those are per ordinance, so those have to go with any special permit you issue for any type of marijuana establishment, retail or otherwise.
Read them in the record.
Eight would be the special permit is non-transferable and non-assignable. Nine, design and implement a security plan approved by the Malden Police Chief, which shall include without limitation all security measures for the site and the transportation of marijuana, marijuana products to and from on, to and from off-site premises to ensure the safety of employees and the public and to protect the premises' property from theft or other criminal activity, a detailed explanation of payment method if applicable, acceptable at such establishment, and the protection and security of such payments, and if applicable, cash on-site in the presence of a security guard on-site at all hours of operation. Eleven, excuse me, ten, consumption of marijuana and/or marijuana products is prohibited at or within five hundred feet. Eleven, smoking or burning of marijuana and/or marijuana products is prohibited on the premises. Twelve, marijuana in any form, including plants and marijuana products, should not be visible from the outside of the building. Thirteen, any outside storage of any kind is prohibited. Fourteen, any outside display of any kind is prohibited. Fifteen, incorporate odor control technology and provisions, ensure that emissions do not violate Mass. General laws, Chapter 111, Section 31(c), including but not limited to those specified for odors. And then sixteen, prior to issuance of any building permit or occupancy permit, submit copies of the following licenses and approvals, A, a valid license issued by the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission, as defined here in the ordinance, B, a fully executed community host agreement with the City of Malden, as defined here in this ordinance, C, any required license and/or approvals issued by the Malden License Board, and D, any required license and/or approvals issued by the Malden Board of Health. I'll note just one other thing, if you let me, you mentioned adding another condition that would have to do with traffic monitoring within six months of issuance of the occupancy Typically, and I heard some of the concerns, the planning board, if they were to recommend that, would also require some mitigation attached to that. It wouldn't just be a monitoring, it would be, you know, if there's something wrong, it would need to be fixed. And developers do different things, sometimes they put money aside, sometimes they agree to a certain cap, or they just make the statement that they will, you know, work with the city to resolve. But the problem will be, is if there are issues that are identified, you know, how will they be get mitigated? There's no, that condition, just to do traffic monitoring, doesn't require any correction, even if it's just an operational correction.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Don't go anywhere, Ms. Romero.
I still have the floor.
I don't know, do you still, I forgot. Do you still have the floor? Councilor Murphy.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Romero. You know, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that was brought into the public forum this evening. The planning board, to me, works very hard, very diligently, and reviews many more situations like this than we do. They obviously, from this recommendation, saw the value in giving us some options here in order, should we decide we want to move forward. And I wanted to make sure that should we take a vote to move forward, that all of those recommendations are included as part of anything that we do this evening. I think it's very important. That was a nine to zero vote by our planning board, who as a body, I really feel very strongly that they take their job very, very seriously. And as I said, they've given us some wiggle room here, and should this move forward, all of those conditions, including Ms. Romero's comment on the last, on Councilor President Spatafora's motion, that we add a mitigation clause to that. So I don't know if anyone has-
All right, so hold on one second. So Councilor Crowe, I know you want to second that, do you want to speak? I just want to second it.
No, I'll second Councilor Murphy. I think, you know, really taking what the planning board had put in there and some of their mitigations, that we should include those in our special permit.
And I just have one other question for Ms. Romero. Regarding the other nine thousand square feet, incorporated in the special permit is the fact that that nine thousand square feet cannot be used, correct?
If you were to adopt that particular condition, it would, it would remain vacant, as they've stated, it would be vacant, and would require an amendment of the special permit-
Okay.
-if they wanted to come back-
Okay.
-to propose an occupancy, whether that's additional marijuana retail or some other form of marijuana establishment.
Okay. The one condition that I would maybe challenge a little bit or just speak to is the use of the indoor parking, I think to, depending on what that loading dock is used for, and if it's used, if you have your people parking indoors and can coordinate deliveries so that it's not affecting the general public, I don't think I would put the condition on restricting you from using that parking, because I think, you know, parking spaces are at a premium. And if you can find a way to utilize that effectively and safely, I would be, you know, I would not be opposed to striking that particular condition or rewarding it.
So can I just jump in? I just want to make sure we're keeping score here. So, so the motion, Council Murphy, because I want to make sure it's documented and the petitioner is understanding what's being presented, right? I believe some of these are already, was in your proposal, is being part of the process, but I want to make sure that, because we're not, I know I looked at the planning board document, I have a copy in front of me, but for the rest of my committee, they don't. So in all fairness, I want to make sure that petitioner understands what's being presented and before them and required, as well as, you know, the rest of the council. So to the petitioner, you understand? Before, I don't want, I don't want to get into a debate here and then we gotta, you know.
We understand the conditions completely, and it's the Council Murphy's-
Okay.
...issue with indoor parking. Just to be clear, deliveries don't happen during retail hours, period. That does, that, they're off-hours, so that's, ends up unused during retail hours unless for parking.
Okay. So Council Murphy, you have, I just want to make sure-
No, I absolutely-
And I know the clerk is writing down everything to make sure that, because this is a special permit, this is a, you know, this is something we gotta take serious, and I don't want to do this over again.
No, and we don't do this every day, which is why I wanted to make sure that the planning board's recommendations were all included here.
Okay. So are you all set with that?
Yes.
So you're gonna, so if, again, so the conditions are something that you're recommending with, with striking out the one on, you're striking out the one that the planning board made a recommendation to-
Not allow parking.
Not allow the parking in the, in the, in the public, in the, in the delivery area, right? The loading zone, I believe the term is, correct?
Yes, not allow the parking in the loading zone, and I would strike that out.
It was number three?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was, I didn't, I saw the line, I was looking for the line. So I'll read this. The loading and delivery area may not be designated or used for parking. So there are fourteen conditions, Council Murphy, is it sixteen, seventeen? Sixteen, sixteen. There's sixteen commission, conditions. Council Mur-
Could I add one thing to that?
Yes.
You maybe don't want to strike it, you want to say it may be used for parking, because under the zoning, it can't be used for parking.
Okay, so may be used for parking.
So you're trying, you're going to allow something that's not allowed under the zoning, so you would need to put that in as a condition, otherwise it's going to be prohibited.
Okay, so it may be used for parking during retail hours.
So that seems like a motion, Councilor.
Make a motion to change-
Item three-
Item three.
In the planning board recommendation to allow that deliveries, the loading and deliveries may be designated for, or used for parking-
During retail hours.
During retail hours. Everybody here has that? I need a second. Who is that? Is that Council Linnahan? Council Linnahan? Second it? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So we made that amendment. So we gotta, we are gonna have to take a vote up in the entire paper, I want to make sure I get the amendment, because I'm starting to forget things in my-
And now we need your amend, well, the amendment, I'll make-
Well, they agreed to it voluntarily, I don't have to put it in the-
No, I think we do, because I think, I'd like to add, Council-
Okay, so go ahead and make the amendment, I can as the chair.
I, I would like to make the amendment that we do a traffic mitigation study six months after the opening of the business, and that, I mean, I don't know what even to put for a figure, a cap, and that-
So you want to do, I'm sorry, monitoring and mitigation.
Monitoring and mitigation.
Six months after occupancy permit.
Correct.
Is issued.
So monitoring and, motion that we do monitoring and mitigation, six months-
Do you have a motion, Councilor?
After the opening of the business. Do I have a second?
Discussion, all right, hold on, we got some discussion of the motion, so hold on. So Council Semenelli, discussion of the motion, hold on one second, and I know Karen McDonald, Council McDonald, excuse me, has his light on patiently, so let's go. You have discussion of the motion, so it's limited to the motion, go ahead, Council Semenelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I just want to be clear that, you know, put, implement in this, do we, is this something that we normally do? Is this something that we would continuously do as businesses open up to ask for a traffic study six months after they open? Do we do that with all businesses, or are we just doing this with-
So I'm gonna let Council Seeger, because she just had a case where this is starting to become standard. Council Seeger?
Sure.
Councilor Semenelli, we just did it on, at the Town Line Motel, the new developer, six months from the day that they open is to do a traffic study, so it's not just specifically for cannabis, we're doing it with a lot of new development in the city.
Rebuttal, Mr. President?
Rebuttal?
Yeah.
I don't know if it's a rebuttal, but you can-
So rebuttal. So, so like, so is this a new thing? Is that what we're gonna do, like, as, as businesses open up, and because we failed to do a traffic study prior to them open up, opening up, we're gonna, we're gonna start now to suggest that they, after they opened, after they've opened-
So can I rebuttal?
Yeah.
So, so, just like we have new counselors, wink, wink, right? It's a baseline. So what happens, and again, is it, what's your name?
Rebecca Frau.
Yeah, Rebecca, Rebecca, no offense, Rebecca, I don't believe Rebecca, right? Because every traffic study we see always says there's no impact, right? Oh, there's only two more trips a day, right? But we all can't get out of our driveway half the day, right? So what this does, it allows us to create a baseline saying, this is what the peer review said, or what the petitioner said, not just this in this case, and then six months later, this is the actual impact, right? And it gives us the ability to really see what that new business has in surrounding areas. And like Ms. Romero, Ms. Romero said was, some, some conditions require a certain dollar amount to help with that mitigation. If, if there really is no impact, there's nothing to worry about. So that's why a lot of cities, like Melrose required it, and they're requiring that in a lot of their, I wouldn't say every development, but where it's called for a traffic study, we always do them before, and we never see the impact till after, when the residents call us up and say, there's too much traffic. We can't say, well, the traffic study said there's only two more trips a day, it doesn't work.
Okay, Mr. President, rebuttal, rebuttal?
Yeah, go ahead, Council.
Listen, hey, hey, just kidding around, seriously though. Again, I think that, like, it's really not a real true study, because as, as we're asking for these things, right? As we're asking for these studies-
Yep.
-we're, we're constantly changing our roadways at the moment. I mean, we, we just discussed that, the, the roads are narrowing because of, because of the bus lanes and the bike lanes, so wouldn't that have an impact on the study that's going to, so unfairly to them and unfairly to any business that's moving forward, they're gonna be unfairly impacted by the fact of the matter that we're just, we're continuously changing the roadways to continuously having a more of a traffic buildup that's happening right now as we speak.
Agreed, but we, we require traffic studies regardless, so I think the thing is, it just gives us the-
Before or after?
Well, some developments require before, but let's move, can we, can we agree, disagree? Thank you, Councilor.
Yeah, yeah, just wanted to make my point.
Who had the floor? Was that Councilor, so, so that was, that was, so Councilor, I forgot who had the floor now. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
I made the motion.
You made, you made the motion, you want a discussion of the motion, anybody else want a discussion of the motion?
I, I did, I was first.
I'll, I'll go, I'll, do you want discussion of the motion, Council McDonald? Okay, you, you were first, I'm gonna go to you. This is on the discussion of the motion, so we're clear. We're not, we're not always like this, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, am I live? All right, there we go.
Council McDonald, you have the floor.
Thank you. Council Murphy said it's gonna be a long night, I say, I think it's already a long night, so I don't, so just, I just wanted to be clear, two things, one from the, for the, from the petitioner, so the planning board's recommendations are very specific about the space usage, and is that gonna cause problems? So it says, you know, the special permit authorizes marijuana retailer use only four thousand and six square feet on the first floor, seventeen ninety-four square feet for retail space, like, is, does that, does that create problems to be so specific? Is it more helpful for, you know, to just say, use of only four thousand six square feet as presented in the plans? I'm just wondering if there's a level of specificity that is gonna cause further problems?
The, the plans have been drawn in a way-
Mr. Demak, who is speaking, the mic is, we want-
I apologize.
Yep.
Mr. President.
Yep.
Councilor, the, the plans have been drawn in a way that we can use the facility as drawn. So a condition which typically happens, and it's part of the list of conditions, use approved per the plans, that's what we plan to use, and that's the space that's outlined. So we can make use of that space. We've said future use, and as Ms. Romero has stated, and I completely agree with her, we would have to come back, we'd have to petition you, we'd have to bring in all the studies and talk about how exactly we could expand into that space if we ever did.
Okay. And the remainder that says shall remain vacant and shall be used for no purpose whatsoever, does that mean, like, you can't even have a staff meeting in there?
We're gonna close the door and we're gonna walk away, unless, you know, there's some other statement, but we're not gonna be using it.
Okay. All right, thank you. My other comment was just to say about this, that, you know, the, the position that the council is in about this, about this permit and all permits, is to be able to select the best applicant that we can, the best applicants that we can, and we have to, we have to provide for applicants for cannabis, you know, businesses in our community per state law. So I just wanted to know, you know, I understand there are many concerns about all businesses or all applications for cannabis businesses, and that's why we have this extensive process. But I just wanted to know, like, there's no version of this that'll, that involves us responding to all the concerns and living up to our duty under the law, which is to provide for these permits that are approved, that are, that the state requires us to do. So I just wanted to clarify, my comments and support are reflective of that public process, as well as just saying, of the, of the job that we have to do, there's, this is a strong proposal. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council McDonald. So I'm gonna go to Council Winslow now, so discussion on the, the amendment. Council Winslow.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I definitely think, I mean, having participated in the Town Line project, and I, I know that went through a process of, you know, proposal, traffic peer review, a mitigation proposal, and then another mitigation proposal, so, and then there's always, there was actually, in that one, there was a condition to, they had to put aside some money in case, so, so there was a lot of intensity on that, so I guess that's the question, if we have mitigation, should we actually put a dollar figure on it? That's one of the questions, that's what I, maybe, you know, Michelle, you could, are there other situations where the planning board has called for studies and then just said, and then work on mitigation per, you know, the tra, the, the traffic report?
Well, that, I mean, that's, that will be the problem, that, that's, you know, why the first condition is that, that we peer review the information they already submitted, because there could be mitigation that comes out of that, that we would, you know, you would be requiring them to do. If, if it already says you need to, you know, fix the main Charles intersection by changing whatever configuration, we would already know that, and you would be putting that in as a condition. This is a little different, because we don't know what, what the mitigation is gonna be. Typically, the developer doesn't agree to open-ended mitigation, because we don't know how much it's gonna cost, they don't know how much it's gonna cost. So without knowing what the mitigation is, you can't really put a dollar figure on it. There may be no mitigation, or there could be substantial mitigation. And again, it could just be operational as well.
So, okay, thanks. I mean, I mean, one of the, just this, now, just my, my own comments is that, you know, being on the, you know, the east side of town, I mean, frequently, my wife and I go up Ninety-Nine, go by Garden Remedies at various times of day, and, I mean, since that's opened, I've never seen a traffic issue there, the parking, I, I know sometimes maybe on a Friday, just like we might have a liquor store, but day in, day out, I, I, maybe at the start, maybe that, but I could say we're up there relatively frequently, I think maybe Council Murphy gets there even more, but I guess- I guess, I, I, in my experience, I have not seen that be, um, you know, the, a major issue. Um, I mean, I think that knowing that, um, you know, I definitely would wanna see that there's sufficient parking, that we leave both eight onsite and 11 offsite, plus this foreloading, I think that we need that, and the condition of, you know, limiting the four, four spaces, so, I mean, obviously, I think there are some more complexities here at Charles and, and Main, that it's a little closer to any intersection, and that can be, at prime times, it can be very busy, um, but I, I think having, I, I am supportive of having the traffic, uh, you know, let's proceed with the peer review before it opens, and have a commitment to have both mitigation, um, before occupancy, uh, based on the peer, peer, uh, peer review, as well as any with six months afterwards, and then I also, you know, I would also...
Is that an amendment, Counselor, just to keep in track, is that an amendment?
No, well, there's already the, the first condition...
The peer review's already there, yep.
Is already peer reviewed there, I mean, I guess the amendment would be that, that the six-month traffics, I mean, there, that, that there be mitigation based on both the peer review, that's condition one, and a six-month study, I guess that's the, just to make it clear, that, that we would be asking for mitigation based on preliminary, uh, you know, peer review that we would do, as well as any six-month traffic study.
Okay, so let's just keep this track, not to interrupt the Counselor, you need a second for that amendment? Do I have a second? Counselor Semenelli seconded that, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that's 11-nothing, continue.
Okay.
You're opposed to the traffic study? The, okay, so it's, I spoke too soon, 10-1.
All right, and then, I, I mean, I, I, I would like to have a discussion about the, um, I, I would like to ultimately also ask, have a condition related to making sure we, uh, the petitioner work with the city, related to making sure that the Spot Pond Brook Greenway connection can happen, um, I, you know, so, I know for a fact, like, 25 years ago, when the Gateway Shopping Center in Everett was being built, I worked to get a condition to make sure that when the Northern Strand Trail was ready, that it was gonna get, get built through there, and it's being built 25 years later, um, and it's going by the casino, I guess I'm not, I, I certainly, I think we could try to work to make sure that, you know, kids aren't, aren't going into the, the, the shop or whatever, I mean, just like, you know, uh, into liquor stores or whatever, uh, but I do think it's, it's, um, you know, knowing how critical regional connections are, and as we talk about, you know, looking, trying to have some alternatives to having the bikes go down the street, I mean, if, if bikes don't have an alternative to come down the Spot Pond Brook Greenway, they come down Main Street, and then we, we, we wanna have them safely come down. So we're, we're building this infrastructure, and, and, you know, Governor Baker's committed to a $50 million bridge, um, from the casino to Assembly Square for our trail, and so that Spot Pond Brook Greenway, we're literally, you know, later in the, tonight, we're voting on $50 million to go to the 25% design, so we, as a community, are committing to do that, and it's important that we connect that thing to that, so I, my, you know, I think just having the condition that the petitioner work with the city, um, and abutting property owners to, um, have that connection, um, when the city's ready to do that, um, I, I would make that motion, uh, like I say, just like in Everett, it took a few years to work it out, but...
Yeah, we gotta do it.
I just think it's critical, um, you know, this property, you know, in the past, did connect Middle Street to the, to trail when it was used for freight purposes and stuff like that, those easements are there, um, so I, I just think it's, you know, being visionary, and like I say, 25 years ago, I made some sort of proposal, and it's worked out to create another half mile of critical trail, so, uh, people don't have to route, ride their bikes on Route 99, so I, I just think it is important.
All right, so, so that's a motion, I need a second to, to work, okay, second by Counselor Linehan? All right, so, uh, yeah, so there's a lot of motions going on, so me and the clerk are trying to keep this, so that's Counselor, that is Counselor Winslow's motion, that, that the petitioner work with the city, uh, to connect, uh, the, 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 the potential Spot Pond Brook Greenway to the bike path. Is that correct?
Right, yeah.
Seconded by Counselor Linehan, is there any discussion in the motion?
No.
Seeing none and hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so two opposed.
All right.
All right, are you done, Counselor Winslow?
I'm done, thank you.
All right, so now, Counsel, before I go to somebody else, Counselor Murphy, we do not have a vote on your original ones, and we wanna make sure the clerk gets this down, so can we just?
Okay.
Are you gonna make a mo- okay, so hold on, so, but she had, okay, so Counselor O'Malley, go ahead. I gotta turn you on, there you go, Counsel.
Uh, so I was confused how many and what the, the, um, conditions were, but I believe our city clerk is aware of them, you're proposing everything that the planning board's recommended, except for number three, which is, uh, which prohibited using a loading dock for parking.
No, they're gonna, to, to use it, they're gonna keep it in there, but use it for park...
They, they were considering prohibiting it, so we're not gonna im- implement number three.
No, we're gonna put it in there and cha- because, because Michelle Romero said they'll put it in there, because right now, if we take it out, it's not allowed by our current ordinance, by keeping it in there and changing, allowing it, they can do that.
Oh, so it's gonna say the loading and delivery area will be allowed for parking?
Off-hours.
During, during.
During off-hours, were you not here for that discussion?
During, during retail hours.
Do, do, do you don't retail hours?
I was physically here, yes.
Yes, yeah, yeah, so that's, that was the other one, yep.
Okay, cool, thank you.
All right, so, Counselor Murphy, just so we're tracking this.
Yes.
Your motion, which was just, oh, I wish I had this in my home for my kids, I could turn them on and off, like, this is fantastic. Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
So, you have a motion?
Yes.
That, I'm not gonna repeat, because we went through what that, we accept the, the planning board's most, uh, recommendations changing, I think it's number three?
Number three, to include, to allow park, indoor parking during retail hours.
And the peer review?
And the peer review.
That was, that was part of Counselor Winslow, so we're covered there, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, you want, you made that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I need a second. On Counselor Semenelli's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Ca- uh, Counselor Murphy makes a motion to accept the planning board's recommendations, with the only change being number three, on the planning board recommendation that the loading dock, delivery dock area be, may be designated and used for parking during retail hours?
Yes.
So that's the only change of those conditions. So that was seconded by Counselor Semenelli, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 10-1, Counselor Condon says no. Okay, Counselor Condon, your light is blinking, would you like to speak now that you voted no twice? Go ahead, Counsel.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I, I don't have any problem with the planning board, uh, putting those restrictions on, but what I saw today, down there, that other business that's in there, it was, it was, it was out of control, I mean, I pulled right in there, and I don't, I just, uh, look at, these are good people, there's no question about it, I know Ed, who ran the sign company down there in Maple, Maplewood Street, there's no question, but that other business that's there, they gotta go. When? I hope they go far away.
Mr. President, if I...
It's getting late, everybody, it's getting late, Counselor Condon, well past his bedtime.
If I may, I, we are required by law to only be the use, to be the only use in that building. TJ's, with your approval and our commencement, TJ's will be moving, they have been noticed of that, they have found another location, it is close by, it is not us, so they will be no longer occupied.
Are they heading towards River?
I don't know, and I won't speak for them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Romero has a question, so, Ms. Romero?
Hi, I, I just wanted to mention two other things that have come up, the planning board didn't, had a concern with the parking, and I understand they're proposing it off-site, they had a concern with the agreement, I would recommend, and the planning board did not recommend, they do not own the property with the 11, so if you are thinking that they're gonna have to provide the 11, you should put that in a condition, because right now, they're not required to provide those 11 off-street, off-site parking spaces, I know it's being shown here, but that, I would strongly recommend, if you are moving, if you're okay with only the eight and the four inside, then that's fine, but if you are thinking the 11 are included, they're technically not, because there aren't another property, that's not the subject of the special permit, so I would recommend a condition, um, if you are inclined to do that, then I had one other comment as well.
So Counselor Crowe, any objections? She's the ward counsel, I'll yield to the ward counsel, so Counselor, uh, O'Malley made the motion, seconded by Counselor Crowe, to make the re- do you have that recommendation, Counsel, uh, clerk? Okay, question on that, go ahead, Counselor McDonald.
You said, uh, Michelle, you said the planning board did not recommend that, but you are...
No, the, the planning board recommended against the whole petition, but they said if you move forward with it, if you make the findings, they recommended certain conditions.
No, I, I understand that, but the thing that you just said, you said...
That was not included, that's correct.
Why was it not included?
Because of the...
Because they read the...
Uncertainty of the agreement, so what I'm recommending is if you want them to provide 11 off-site parking spaces somewhere, whether it's there or somewhere else, you should put that in as a condition, it may be there, or it may be someplace else, so I, I'm just throwing that out there, if you're okay with just the 12 onsite, I just didn't want you to think you're approving a plan with 25, because you, you wouldn't be.
Well, there is a motion.
Yep.
Counselor McDonald, you have discussion, so any more discussion?
So, are, I, I guess, did the planning board discuss this particular provision, or it just never came up? The thing that you just said, requiring the special permit to, to als- the, the petitioner to, to se- secure 11 off-site spots, which is, so it just didn't come up?
It was discussed at length, how the off-site parking that they're proposing isn't reliable.
I'm just trying to understand, they put a...
I'm making that recommendation now, based on the discussion I've heard at this hearing, and thinking that you're thinking you're granting a special permit with 25 parking spaces, it, you're not, I just, you don't have to do it, I would recommend that you do it, based on what I've heard tonight, um, if you're thinking that you want this business to have 25 parking spaces, it doesn't, it only has 12 onsite, so, it's up to you, if you, if you're okay with that, that's fine.
Counselor Crowe, you're the ward counsel, I believe you seconded, but I, I will give you the mic, um, Counselor McDonald, I didn't want to interrupt you, you all set? Counselor Crowe?
No, I think based on, um, what Michelle just had said about, like, you know, that it's a driveway thing, and if it goes south, if it, it doesn't go south, and they get to use those 11 spots, no harm, no foul, but if they can't use that, and they, it gets taken away from them, then, then I think we do put the condition, and if those 11 spots go away, they have to find 11 additional spots someplace else.
Okay, so we have a motion. You're lucky I like you tonight, Counselor, come on up.
Mr. President, if I, if I may?
You may, you got one minute.
Literally, the...
Mike, Mike, just so, we have it in the record.
Yes, um, just one issue, and I, I'm sure that, uh, Ms. Romero will agree, we're only, if we're only using 4,000, we're only required to have 16, so if you've given, you've had us use 12, that would only require an additional four that be found if this agreement ever went south, maybe five if we round up, because it's a little over 4,000, but that's, that would be the, the requirement at law. Thank you.
That makes, sounds fair.
Yep. Oh, you don't wanna make the mo- okay, so we don't have a mo- so, I don't, he didn't, he withdrew his motion.
All right, so, that if the, if the off-site parking goes south, that they have to find additional five spaces someplace else?
Okay, so Counselor Crowe makes that motion, seconded by Counselor Murphy, all in favor? All opposed? 11-nothing. Okay, where are we, ladies and gentlemen of the council? Any more discussion? Uh, Michelle, you had one more thing?
I just had one more thing, thank you.
I'm gonna give you one minute too, Michelle, because it's, it's round at 10 o'clock here.
You, I know, you mentioned, I have, I know, we have more business, the hours of operation have been discussed as nine to nine, I just wanted the council to know that by ordinance, they're 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM, so unless you put a restriction in, and I'm only suggesting this, because I know you don't do a lot of these special permits, the planning board considers this often, do, do you wanna put that restriction in?
Oh, you're to the ward counsel, I can't make a motion anyways, is it you? Hold on, Counsel, I want you in the record too, go ahead.
No, I think in their proposal, it's nine to nine, we should stick to that, if they wanna change it, go for extended hours, or...
So are you, are you making that a condition though? Because I don't, is it, I don't, are you gonna make it a condition that it stays nine to nine, if they wanna change it, they have to come back? Okay, that's called leading the witness, so Counselor Crowe made a motion, I need a second, Counselor Semenelli, he's on, Counselor Semenelli's ready to go, all in favor? All opposed, that carries, clerk, you're a no, coun- I'm sorry, I'm assuming you're... 10-1, Counselor McDonald, is it no? Okay, now I need a motion to pass, deny, table.
I make the motion.
I'm gonna go to Counselor Crowe, it's her ward, made, Counselor Crowe made a motion to pass with those conditions, which I'm not gonna list out, seconded by Counselor Semenelli, we're gonna do a roll call, clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Condon?
No.
Crowe?
Yes.
Linehan?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
O'Malley? Seega?
Yes.
Semenelli?
Yes.
Winslow?
Winslow, yes.
Spatafor?
Spatafor, yes.
Carries 10-1.
Carries 10-1, welcome to Marlin, congratulations.
Thank you, y'all.
You're welcome. All right, I'm gonna ask the council, anybody need a bio break? All right, we're gonna take a five-minute bio break, I make a motion to adjourn for five minutes. I can't get this thing to move any faster, we're trying.
Somebody asked, let me ask you something. Somebody asked, let me ask you something. What's a pickleball court? Is that cricket? How much would that cost to put in? I know, I got a request today, yeah. Yeah, yeah. How much would, I'd like to know what it would cost. Hey, if you saw what I saw today, Debbie, right, it was a friggin nightmare down there. Oh, thank you.
I, uh, I, yeah, I'm still not quite believing it, to be honest with you.
Are you gonna hang on to see what they say on this next, I know it's late?
I don't think so, I don't worry, uh, I'll, I'm sure if it's posted, I wanna look, um, you know, online, because I know it'll be posted. You know how he thought it was? He thought it was hurt.
(pause)
Nice work.
Oh, good.
God, it's...
I, yeah, I, yeah. I'm still not quite believing it, to be honest with you.
Are you gonna hang on to see what they say on this next slide? I know it's late.
I don't think so. I don't worry. Uh, I'll, I'm sure if it's posted, I want to look. Um, you know, online, because I know it'll be posted.
I still feel good about myself. Thank you, too. A lot of people, you don't believe in the state?
I'm just, I want to...
Well, maybe, uh, can't time tomorrow. Should be, like, two sentences text.
I'm still looking for it on my own.
Right. Yeah, I definitely wanted to come out. I was just gonna call my kids over, you know, like...
You weren't visiting your mother-in-law?
No, my mother-in-law. My, my brother-in-law.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I know.
So you're talking about...
You got your son?
That's my son.
I thought of you.
You know how he thought it was? He thought it was hurt.
(pause)
Back in order. If the council could please come, come back to their seats. I don't mean to rush people, but I do know it is certainly not late for us, but also some people that have been waiting patiently to give updated presentations in city business. So I believe we have the ability right now to have a council meeting. So I, I call the council back in order.
Two, four.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna play the clerk for a minute. Give me one second, Mr. Patrini. I always say his name wrong.
Evan.
Evan. Uh, so this is gonna be under, we had to move this around. So this is, this isn't under pub, public comment. So give me one second here.
It's under guest.
It's under guest. That's absolutely right. My, my dark, it's all discombobulated right now. Where's mine? Here we go. Under guest. Okay. That's the cannabis here. There's the open meeting law. Raise a flag. Public comment. Okay. The Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development will give an informal, informational, excuse me, presentation regarding the new MBTA community zoning per Mass General Law, C 40A, new section 3A. And for those who may or may not know, this was something that Governor Baker has been reviewing and asked, I think, required to actually answer this initiative by May. So Debbie Burke and Evan reached out to me a couple of weeks ago, and they wanted to make sure they had the ability to present this as required. This is the first step in the journey. Just to want to let the council know, this is, there's to be nothing proposed right now, and that this was just our first step in the journey, but we do have to have this before the city council. No pressure on Evan for making this the quickest presentation he's ever given, but fair enough. So Evan, the floor is yours. Let me make sure I have the podium mic on for you. Evan, there you go.
Thank you, Counselor.
You want to just give your name and your job for the, for the people watching on TV?
Absolutely. My name is Evan Spatrini. I'm the Senior Planner and Policy Manager here in the City of Malden, Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development. So, good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. I, I, along with Debbie Burke, the Director of OSPCD, Michelle Romero, City Planner, and Maria Luis from the Mayor's Office, have been looking at the new MBTA Communities Multifamily Zoning for the last few months since the new, since the state's draft guidelines were issued in December. So we are going to review those draft guidelines tonight. There has been a lot of public discussion about the new rules, so we hope this presentation will answer some of your questions and clarify what the draft guidelines actually mean for Malden and how we can move forward.
And everybody should have a copy on their desk.
Yes. Thank you. So first, we'll take a look at the legislation and the effects of non-compliance. Then we'll dig into the draft compliance guidelines themselves and end with our next steps. So let's look at the legislation. The Economic Development Bill of 2021 included two pieces of the governor's housing choice legislation. It reduced the threshold of votes needed to adopt certain zoning measures promoting housing production to a simple majority, and it created the new section 3A to chapter 40A of the general laws, which is the zoning act, detailing new multifamily zoning requirements for MBTA communities. That's the piece we're gonna focus on tonight. So, section 3A, 3A of chapter 40A states that an MBTA community shall have zoning ordinance that provides for at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right, provided, however, that such multifamily housing shall be without age restrictions and shall be suitable for families with children. A district of reasonable size shall have a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre and be located not more than a half mile from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station. The legislation authorized the Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, to develop compliance guidelines, which is what we're going to review tonight. But before we get into the guidelines, we'll look, we'll look quickly at the effects of non-compliance. It's important to note that compliance is not mandatory. However, per the legislation, an MBTA community that fails to comply with the section shall not be eligible for funds from the Housing Choice Initiative, the Local Capital Projects Fund, or the Mass Works Infrastructure Program. So Mass Works and Housing Choice are both competitive grant programs that fund infrastructure projects. Mass Works looks for projects that will spur private development, and Housing Choice rewards communities that have built significant housing units over the last five years. Malden has utilized both of these grant programs. We received about $11 million from Mass Works for City Hall. From Housing Choice, we received $225,000 for the Dartmouth, Dartmouth Street renovations in FY '20, and $250,000 just last year for Roosevelt Park. We are considering grant applications for both of these programs this year as well. The Local Capital Projects Fund is a fund that historically has been used for public housing improvements, but has other possible applications. It's a little unclear how that fund actually works. It's not a competitive grant program.
No.
As I mentioned before, DHCD issued draft guidelines in December of last year. To comply with section 3A in 2022, we must present the draft guidelines to the city council, which is what we're doing tonight, and submit a form to DHCD by May 2nd, which is why we're doing this tonight. Within the draft guidelines, we will look at key definitions, the general principles of compliance, how DHCD will determine if a community complies with the new law, and the deadlines we would need to meet. So this is not an exhaustive list of terms in the guidelines, just the ones that are most relevant to our community. Multifamily housing is defined in the legislation as a building with three or more residential dwelling units, or two or more buildings on the same lot with more than one residential dwelling unit in each building. This definition is different than the definition in our zoning code, but for the purposes of this presentation, multifamily housing will always mean three or more units. A multifamily district is a zoning district, including an overlay district, in which multifamily uses are allowed by right. And just as a reminder, too, the legislation stipulates that we only need one multifamily district to be in compliance. A rapid transit community is one with a subway station within its borders or within half mile of its borders. We have two, so we are considered a rapid transit community. And the unit capacity, this is probably the most important term, it is an estimate of the total number of multifamily housing units that can be developed as of right within the multifamily district. The unit capacity does not measure the number of additional units that could be built. It's a measurement that assumes a complete redevelopment of a certain parcel or district. I will get into that a little bit more in a few slides.
Can I ask a question while you're going through?
Sure.
On slide five, it says an MBTA community shall have a zoning ordinance. No, I'm lying. On slide five, a district of reasonable size, minimum gross, but it says .5 miles from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry, a bus terminal. And then in this other slide, it says rapid transit community. So that means that's only subway, right? Hence rapid?
Yes, rapid.
So the commuter, so the commuter rail will not count?
Um, no. I mean, our...
We have both.
We have both.
But Melrose doesn't.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. However, Melrose, Oak Grove is within a half mile of Melrose, so they are considered a rapid transit.
Well, I just didn't, I, I saw rapid transit one slide. The other slide had all the other transportation names.
Yeah. I, I, I just pulled out rapid transit because that's what we are.
Okay.
But other communities are treated differently.
Okay, that's fine. Sorry to screw you up there.
No worries. Uh, let me just find my notes. Okay, so the general principles of compliance state that multifamily, the multifamily district must permit multifamily housing as of right. It must be a district of reasonable size. The district must have a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre, have no age restrictions, and be suitable for families with children. And municipalities have the flexibility to choose the location of the multifamily district. So a lot of that is taken right from the legislation, but we'll go into how that is actually implemented in the, in the guidelines. So permitting multifamily housing as of right means that a developer does not need to obtain any discretionary permit or approval, like a special permit. Site plan review, however, is allowed. Our zoning only allows for multifamily uses by right in the residential incentive overlay and Rose Quarry districts. So just to visualize that really quickly, this is the full zoning map, and here are the districts that allow multifamily housing by right. So the RIO districts are, you can't quite see on the screen here, are the hatchstones in red near Malden Center, so on the, the left side, and Rose Quarry are the blue on the eastern side of the city. The second principle is that the district must be of reasonable size. DHCD has created two tests for determining reasonable size. The first one is the minimum land area. The district must be at least 50 acres, which is roughly 1/10 of the area within a half mile radius. An overlay district, as opposed to the base zoning, is acceptable, subject to certain conditions. For this presentation, we're only looking at Malden Center, just to provide illustration. The shaded circle represents 50 acres, and the multifamily district could be located anywhere within the larger dotted circle, which represents that half mile radius.
Counsel O'Malley.
To, to your earlier point, the, the earlier slide said that it could be even bus stops or literally anything. So it could be anywhere in Malden?
Um, not, not exactly. For a rapid transit community, they're, they're looking for the, the train station. The...
So Oak Grove or Malden Center?
That's correct. Yeah. We would have to, so...
And then Melrose has to do it within, where would Melrose have to do it?
Um, probably more, more than... Near Oak Grove. They do have a commuter rail. So we could make the argument that the most appropriate place for this multifamily district is in fact not around one of the train stations, but on a bus line somewhere. That is a conversation that, that we could have, but I think that would, that would be a difficult argument to make, I think, considering the, the rapid transit.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Right. Okay. So the second test to determine reasonable size is the minimum multifamily unit capacity. This is a measure, a measurement of how many units could be built by right in a district, regardless of what already exists in that district. Essentially, we have to assume a blank slate. Based on the allowable density and the size of a particular parcel, the unit capacity is the maximum number of units that would be allowed on that parcel. So we would calculate that for every parcel in the multifamily district to determine the entire district's unit capacity. DHCD calculated the minimum unit capacity for each community's multifamily district based on a percentage of the community's existing housing stock. So for rapid transit communities, the unit capacity is 25% of the total housing stock. As of the 2020 census, Malden has 27,721 units of housing. 25% of that is 6,930. It's important to note that this is not a production goal, and communities are not required to build any units to comply with section 3A. But essentially, what this means is that look at existing conditions around the Malden Center T Station. The left shows existing multifamily units. There are currently about 4,900 multifamily residential units within the multifamily district that would comply with the legislation has to have the capacity a half mile of the T. The right shows the number of units that could be built by right to build 6,930 units, assuming there was nothing there to begin with. in the same area. Again, the RIO is the only district that allows multifamily by right, so the unit, the units are limited to those parcels. Our existing zoning allows for 1,797 total units on those parcels, which we calculated based on the size of each parcel and the maximum density allowed in the RIO districts. For purposes of compliance with section 3A, only the unit capacity matters. There's no requirement to build the units that are allowed in the multifamily district.
So let me ask you a question, Evan.
Sure.
So you're saying the unit capacity by right is 1797 if we built everything to its full maximum density?
That's right.
So that's, is that, is that looking at all the available u, units, including commercial space, or is that just looking at residential to get that 1,700?
So if we take every parcel that's in the RIO...
RIO, yep.
We raise every building.
So that includes commercial space and everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly. It would, it would assume that everything is housing and it's built to its max.
And where would we build the 15 new schools we would need?
I am not proposing anything tonight. This is informational.
No, I'm just saying, it's just, that's the math, right?
Could be.
Yeah.
Okay, so the, the third principle is this minimum gross density. Per the legislation, the gross density of multifamily districts must be at least 15 units per acre. District-wide gross density can be met through sub-districts, which would allow for varying densities in different areas of the multifamily district. So it would be one district, different sub-areas that could have varying densities. The multifamily district cannot place age restrictions or restrictions on size of units, number of bedrooms, size of bedrooms, or number of occupants. This is something that I've, I've seen in, in some discourse about this. This does not mean housing developments for specific populations, like senior housing, would be prohibited.
So let me ask you a question, Evan.
Sure.
So you're saying the unit capacity by right is 1797 if we built everything to its full maximum density?
That's right.
So that's, is that, is that looking at all the available units, including commercial space, or is that just looking at residential to get that 1,700?
So if we take every parcel that's in the RIO,
RIO, yep.
we raise every building.
So that includes commercial space and everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly. It would, it would assume that everything is housing and it's built to its max.
And where would we build the 15 new schools we would need?
I am not proposing anything tonight. This is informational.
No, I'm just saying, it's just, that's the math, right?
Could be. Uh, okay, so the, the third principle is this minimum gross density. For the legislation, the gross density of multifamily districts must be at least 15 units per acre. District-wide gross density can be met through sub-districts, which would allow for varying densities in different areas of the multifamily district. So it would be one district, different sub-areas that could have varying densities. The multifamily district cannot place age restrictions or restrictions on size of units, number of bedrooms, size of bedrooms, or number of occupants. This is something that I've, I've seen in, in some discourse about this. This does not mean housing developments for specific populations, like senior housing, would be prohibited. It just means the zoning cannot require the multifamily developments to be senior housing or something like that. Municipalities have the flexibility, this is the, the fifth principle of the general principles.
Can I ask you another question?
Yes.
When you say number of occupants, does that supersede the Board of Health code?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. So you still have to have the minimum square footage per, per resident?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. It would not supersede any building codes or...
I thought, I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
Uh, what was I looking at? Okay, so municipalities have the flexibility to choose where their multifamily district is located as long as it is in, as it is within a half mile of a T Station. And just to clarify again, we only need one multifamily district, and it can be within a half mile of, in our case, either T Station.
Counselor O'Malley. All right, hold on, hit the button, hold on. There you go. Wait, why is it not going on?
Sorry, I'm used to raising my hand now. Does it have to be contiguous?
So if it's base zoning, yes. An overlay district does not need to be contiguous, however...
The, the challenge with that is people don't have to use it, which is what happened in the downtown.
Well, I mean, that's, that's true, but also within the guidelines, it doesn't have to be contiguous, but there has to be one portion that's at least 25 acres. And any portion that is smaller than five acres won't count towards the total.
Okay.
So it could be 25, one portion is 25 acres, and then you have five that are five acres, and that's pretty much the smallest breakdown you could have.
Okay, thank you.
So just to, um...
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Victor, I'm sorry.
Apologies.
Counselor told you before.
So just to follow up on that, so we could, under these draft guidelines, for example, do like a 25-acre, you know, thing, district, excuse me, near Malden Center and 25 acres near Oak Grove.
Yeah.
I, and, and does, does that have to be entirely within the half mile radius?
At least half of it has to be within a half mile.
And my last, my last point is, so in terms of overlays, can those, how do affordable housing-based overlays, or income-based overlays, is that, can that, could that help satisfy these restrict, these requirements?
That's a great question. It's one that hasn't been answered by DHCD yet. There have been, there was a public comment period that ended the end of March. DHCD should be finalizing their, their guidelines soon. That was a question that came up. There's no kind of affordability mention or anything. I, if your proposed affordable housing overlay type thing district made it so that it was allowable by right, but it had to be affordable, which I think is what, is what you're talking about, I don't know. Because it's by right, so it meets that, but you're adding this affordability restriction that really isn't contemplated in this at all. So I think that we're still looking for some guidance from DHCD on that, whether it would actually count towards this.
Well, I just, you know, I just want to offer, as, as you have the ability to get more information from DHCD, you know, I think what I hear from constituents is over and over, we need more affordable options for housing, right? And if what we end up doing is creating, you know, high-end luxury housing in order to satisfy this, I don't think... I, let me put it another way. I'm interested in trying to use whatever the state requires us to do to further the goals that we know our constituents want and, you know, and, and need. And I hear affordability at the top of that list, so I just want to say, that's something I'm very interested in hearing, what their response is to.
So I will say, did we, um, did we pass out the, the, the letter? Uh, in the, the public comment, the letter that the mayor submitted, we did add that DHCD should consider affordability requirements in, in their final guidelines. We, we completely agree.
Yeah, we'll read that into the record, by the way.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna, we'll read the mayor's letter into the record.
Thank you.
Who dis you on? Come forward and state your name for the record. Who dis you on? Who was it? Amanda?
Rude.
It is, you say rude, Evan? You can say it, Evan, go ahead.
All right.
All right, go ahead.
All right, I just have a couple more.
Excuse the council for what for? Which you're about to build a high-rise development, this entire ward, so.
You know I'm a constituent, right?
Yeah, it does.
Uh, so looking at the general principles again, we do have a zoning district that allows for multifamily development by right, the residential incentive overlay. However, it does not meet the two reasonable, reasonable size tests. It's less than 50 acres, and it does not meet the unit capacity minimum that's been set by DHCD. The RIO does allow for a density of at least 15 units per acre. There are no age restrictions or size restrictions, and it is within a half mile of the T. Since the RIO does not meet the reasonable size tests, we do not have a zoning district that complies with the draft guidelines. And again, these, these are still draft guidelines, so just keep that in mind. Just a few more procedural items from the guidelines. DHCD will make determinations upon request. The guidelines will allow for the city to receive interim compliance for a limited duration to allow time to enact zoning changes, which I'll talk a little bit more about on the next slide. If approved, DHCD will make a determination of compliance every 10 years. And DHCD can rescind a determination of compliance if the community submitted inaccurate information or amended zoning that alters the unit capacity. So finally, the guidelines outline how communities can achieve interim compliance if they do not currently have a multifamily zoning district that meets the criteria. As I mentioned earlier, after this presentation, all we need to do is submit the community information form to comply in 2022 and be eligible to apply for Mass Works and Housing Choice grants this coming round, which opens the beginning of May and applications are due in June. To comply in 2023, communities need to develop an action plan and timeline that would outline the planning studies and outreach needed to adopt new zoning. The deadline to apply for a determination of compliance or notify DHCD that there is not an existing district that complies with Section 3A is December 31st of this year. And we would need DHCD's approval of the action plan by March 31st, 2023, to be able to apply for Mass Works and Housing Choice next year. Rapid transit communities must adopt new zoning by December 31st, 2023, to comply the following year in 2024 and beyond that.
Is that the end?
I got, I got two more, two more. It's almost the end. So what are our next steps? The guidelines are still in draft form, so DHCD must first finalize the guidelines based on public input. I mentioned earlier, Mayor Christiansen submitted a letter to DHCD on March 31st, which you all have. Without the final guidelines, it's difficult to know exactly what to do next. However, we have begun, excuse me, we have begun to pursue grant funding to conduct a planning process that will identify possible solutions and their impacts to help the, to help the city determine the best path forward. Whether or not we choose to comply with Section 3A is a decision that needs to be made with the most information possible. So regardless of what we end up doing, we believe conducting more analyses is our best next step. That's it. That's all I got.
Hey, thank you, Evan. I have some lights. Counsel O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Evan. I, you know, I think you know, I like already kind of live and breathe this through my job every day, basically fielding reporter questions about this constantly. I actually think you did about the best job summarizing it that I've seen, even being really steeped in it. I understand better how it will impact Malden. I guess I have a comment and a question. My, my comment is, or two questions. What can the council do at this point to support what you need to be looking ahead for in terms of, you know, getting a consultant or what we need to think about in the, in the slightly longer term? And then also, do we have a sense of what family-size units means at this point, or has DHCD not designated? Like, to me, I hear that and I think three bedrooms, but is that not defined anywhere?
It's, it's not quite defined, but I think the, what they're getting at is more the, the opposite, where you can't require, it's, it's not, or maybe I'm not understanding your question, but it's not saying you have to have three-bedroom units.
Yep.
It's saying you can't prohibit.
You can't block that?
You can't, yeah.
Okay.
If we're, if we're saying three-bedroom is family size, which I think typically it, it would be.
So that's sort of just a generally accepted
Yeah, I think so.
definition, but it's not, you don't have to explicitly say you will allow that. You just can't block it.
That's right.
Okay, okay. Um, I'll, I'll yield. I lost my train of thought, but I'm sure we'll have plenty of chances to talk about this in the future.
I think you, you asked what the council could do in the short term, in terms of...
Yes, thank you. We're all tired, right?
I guess we do try to seek out some grants and, you know, thanks.
Name, please?
I'm sorry. Debbie Burke, Director of the OSPCD.
Just for the record, Debbie, so when I sue, I make sure I know I'm suing.
Okay. It, it's a question, I don't know that I have a full answer for, Counsel O'Leary, but I think as we continue to try to pursue some grant opportunities, you know, some technical assistance programs to get some help just drafting scenarios, so you folks can get a vision for, this is what this may look like, you know, and, and ramifications of not doing or doing, so it's not telling you one way or the other. It's just building some more information for you. I think we would either want maybe letters of support for some grant, you know, assistance, that type of thing. But, you know, the new grant writer in the office is looking at, you know, a couple of avenues as we speak, so, you know, we, we want to get somebody on board potentially sooner than later. Because if the city ever does move in the direction of having new zoning in place by December 2023, if that's the case, I don't even know how that could be done, if, if it was even fully embraced, so.
That was, I mean, that, I just wanted to point out that that was one of the things that was in the mayor's letter, was the, the timeline that the state is expecting of us. You know, for us to be able to do a thorough planning process and really understand how this can, could, you know, best work for Malden, we would need to do a lot of work and, and take, I think, a lot more time to understand the impacts of this that they're giving us, than they're giving us.
You all set, Counsel O'Leary?
I'm all set, thank you.
All right, Counsel Winslow, we have a bunch of lights, so just everybody be quiet.
Yeah, so on page 24, you kind of talk about the deadlines, and the first one's coming up, May 2nd. So it talks about submit community information forms. So do, is this basically the presentation you've done showing that we have the information for that form? So that's sort of, the next step is the mayor's going to submit that information, so we'll at least be able to apply for grants this year. And then some of it, we get, we need to get a planner on board or whatever to help us figure out the interim compliance and, and help develop the action plan. That's sort of the, what we, what the, kind of, we would be expecting as a city right now, so that's...
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah. This, this presentation was the, the key that we needed to do. Now we can submit this information form, which is really basically telling DHCD that we did this presentation and here's some other basic information.
So, okay.
So we will be able to apply for Housing Choice and Mass Works this year, which we're, you know, thinking about different opportunities that we could utilize those funds.
And so for next year, like March of 2023 or May of 2023, we'd have to be in the midst of the action plan, kind of, to be able to apply and actually be seriously looking at new zoning.
Yeah.
So that's, so that's what we'd be looking at. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Seminelli, excuse me, Counsel Winslow, Counsel O'Malley, then Counsel Seminelli. Counsel O'Malley?
Thank you. So one of the things I think that we have to take into consideration when we are planning for this, and it would, it would be great if y'all started this, so by the time it comes to us, there's been at least a couple eyes on it. If and when we do do this, we, because we can't do a special permit, and there's some guidelines on using site plan review, we really need to make sure that the zoning that we're building on the base has minimum design standards so that we are getting what we want on the front end, so that the developers know what they need to build to the standards that we want, whether that's open space and setbacks and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Because we aren't really going to have the opportunity so much to do that on the back end, which is what we've primarily been doing. This might help us actually be more proactive and not have to always kind of fight for these conditions and, and, and fight for the mitigation, et cetera. But building that into the base zoning could be really helpful, potentially. It really depends how much effort we put in on the, on the front end.
Thank you, Counsel O'Malley. Counsel Seminelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. Oh, I'm a little confused. So, we, so where is the area to be able to do all this, to build all this? Because I don't really see much open space out here to, to do this. So what, what, I don't, I don't get it. What are we supposed to be, what are we going to be building and where?
So, um, right now, we're not proposing any solutions. We are just reviewing the, the guidelines.
But I'm saying, like, multifamilies and affordable housing within the, the, uh, the area of the MBTA station. I mean, I, I look around, around, I mean, how many affordable units were put into these buildings that were built? Because I'm, I'm, I'm one of them guys that come on late. You know, I just got on the city council. So this stuff was already done before I got on. But how many units do you have that's affordable right now in the downtown area of all these new buildings that you built?
None.
None, right? So I, I, I'm just, I'm just confused because we didn't implement that in, in the past. But now we're looking to do that now in the same geographical area that I don't really see any open spots to be building these.
Point information, or Counsel Seminelli, I think that's Counsel McDonald's point. There is no requirement to be affordable. So what they're essentially producing is just more units, but not affordable. So that was Counsel McDonald's point all along, saying you're not really solving the affordable process, you're just making it more expensive possibly, Olivia.
Well, that, that, and even for market rate. I don't, I don't even see where the capacity is to build any of that if we were going to go, if we were going to go with that. So I don't, I, I don't even understand why this is even before us and, and why you want us to... I mean, I'm not going to vote on this because I, I just don't, I don't see the...
The good thing is, we don't have to vote, Counsel.
I, I just don't, I don't know where we're going with it. I, I, it's, I'm confused. I think the people watching are confused too, because there's nowhere to build. But yet, we want to go out and, you know, get grant people, grant writers to come on in here and build on what?
All right. You all set, Counsel? Very profound. Thank you.
All set. If you're shutting me off.
No, no, I'm saying, we don't have, no, we don't have to vote. This is just the information.
I want the answer on the information, where?
In all fairness, and I think Evan, I don't think there is an answer. The state's requiring us to do this, that's why.
Okay.
So I, I did want to clarify that this, we can, we can change the zoning to comply with this. Let's take, just, just to give an example, if you have an existing building, and, and I'll come back to that for a second because I did want to say, um, there, there are no affordability restrictions or, or any mention of affordability in the legislation as it is now. There might, perhaps there will be in, in the final guidelines, but to go back... Sorry, I spilled all your chocolate. Uh, I think that this is the, the confusing part, is the difference between what, what they're looking at is this unit capacity in the zoning and versus actual units built. If we take a 100-unit building that exists, it was built five years ago. And, but the zoning somehow, or, you know, it was developed by special permit, but by right, they only could have done 20 units there. So it's an existing 100-unit building, but the unit capacity, based on the zoning, is only 20. So if we... So if we, I mean, this is, this is, we could, you could change the zoning to meet what's actually there, and then you've increased your unit capacity without changing any number of units or anything. You could also increase it beyond that 100 units, and because that building was built five years ago, you know it's not going to be redeveloped anytime soon. So there's, I think what we need to think of is, this is, it's very complicated. And right now, we just want to do more studies, we have to wait for the final guidelines. I think the, the stick that they have laid out, which is us not being eligible for these certain grant programs, is, is one that's worth considering how we could potentially comply with this in the future.
So, so you all set? Yeah, not that I'm wrapping you up. So I get, I'm lucky, I get to give the last speech before we round it up. I would just say this, I understand Council Seminelli's frustration, I think. Council, you have your mic on? I'll let you speak, I'll let you speak, I just finished my thought, so I don't lose. Council McDonald's point is, I know what the state's trying to do, but what I think they're actually doing is just doing what the same thing they've been doing to all the cities on the rapid transit line, where it protects the communities that are bedroom communities, because they don't have to do a lot of this to some degree. What concerns me here is a couple things is, I know you say it's worth the grant money, but if you put that many units in, and I'm not saying forget affordability, we don't have enough money to put the kids through school with that little carrot that they're giving us. That's the impact there. There's not enough money for the DPW there. There's not enough money for fire and police department there. So I think what they're doing us is they're just trying to force us to take more on here. I'm not arguing the affordability component, but we just heard traffic's a problem, infrastructure's a problem, walkability's a problem, schools, we don't get enough money, and the state's going to come in and say, now we're going to go, now we're not going to just go around your downtown, we're going to push an award three, we're going to push an award four, oh, and by the way, we're all trying to get money to do our parks over, so we're decreasing our green space. That's the challenge I have with it, they're forcing us. I'm not saying we have to look at affordability and increase housing to some component, but the idea of what they're doing here is preposterous. Council, Council Condon said, that's basically three-dever parks. There is not any spot in Malden that's three-dever parks that's got a blank slate, right? And the idea that we're going to, and I know it's all about units, but what they're trying to do is jam more units in Malden, and no offense, Winchester's going to be fine. Because you know what? They're not going to take the million dollars or two million bucks, and we're going to be the ones in trouble. That's what concerns me here. So I, I, it just bothers me that they're trying to play this game about we're going to take away your grant money. I'm almost saying, keep it, because it's going to cost us more money in the end anyways. But I'll yield to Council McDonald. Did I, did I screw you up, Council McDonald?
No, it was me, it was my third time. I just continue, I'd like to turn my own mic off, that's what I.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's my thing, that's my thing. So I just wanted to clarify, so this, so the way that this, this, the state is approaching this, they're not actually requiring us to build anything. They're just requiring us to change the underlying zoning, and the theory is, well, the market will sort it out, developers will sort it out, and that.
It's, yes, that's exactly it. It's, yes, I would say the state's intention with this is to encourage more housing development around rapid transit. It's transit-oriented development. They're taking a very long-term approach with telling communities that they need to change zoning. It's not a production goal, and it wouldn't, you know, none of this would, would happen overnight. But I, I hear your concerns about.
I just have one more question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because I'm, I'm hearing this too, in the news, I'm sure Amanda can, Council Linnahan can, so, can, can echo this, about these, yes, wealthy, quite low-density communities that are just throwing everything they can at this. Have you heard anything about the way the state, like, will they, are they considering harder sticks or ways to push back on that? Because I think the whole, whole approach to this has got to be everybody's doing their part.
Equity.
You know, they just dip out, and that they're not doing their part.
I don't, I mean, there's been some suggestions that, so, so the sticks right now are, are the two grant programs and the local capital projects, or whatever it is that we've, is, is a little nebulous to us, to be honest.
And this can be ownership and rental?
Yeah, it's any.
So if a wealthy community wants to build a thousand, million-dollar houses, apartments, they're fine.
Yeah, if it meets the, the density, yeah.
That's what they're going to do.
Yeah, and I, like, I hear all your concerns, and we put a lot of them in, in the letter that we submitted and have seen a lot of similar concerns. And, and so I think at this point, this is why, the only thing I'm advocating for tonight is that we continue to study this, because I do think, you know, the, at the end of the day, the grant money might not be worth it, but I think we need to, one, we need the final guidelines to actually understand the impacts, or what they're asking us to do. And, and we need to do that work to figure out what, what the impacts would be if we, you know, found a solution, what different solutions mean for impacts, and if we can actually afford to do that, or if we want to do that. So that's the only thing that we're advocating for tonight, is just continue to, to study it.
Well, I appreciate it, hopefully you didn't take it the wrong way, so thank you to the entire strategic, what's the name of the committee now, strategic? I don't know, the old MRA. So thank you for your work, and as well as, I know Maria Louise and Michelle Romero were on that committee, so appreciate that. I'm going to allow the clerk to read the mayor's letter to the record, and we can move on.
Okay, the letter is dated March 31st, 2022, to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development, 100 Cambridge Street, Suite 300, Boston, regarding draft compliance guidelines for multifamily districts under Section 3A, Chapter 40A. To whom it may concern, thank you for the opportunity to comment on the draft compliance guidelines for multifamily districts under the new Section 3A, Chapter 40A of the Massachusetts General Laws. We do agree that transit-oriented development is good, is good housing, transportation, and climate policy. Malden has a long history of investing in multifamily housing around its two MBTA rapid transit stations, Malden Center and Oak Grove, since they first opened in 1975 and 1977 respectively. Most recently, Malden has permitted and/or constructed nearly 1,000 multifamily units located within one-half mile of the Malden Center Station between 2015 and 2020. Malden has, has two overlay zoning districts that allow for multifamily housing development by right within one-half mile of the Malden Center Station, which has been the primary growth areas for the first, for the last 15 years. Our community is heavily dependent on transit. Malden Center Station has the fifth highest ridership level on the Orange Line. Despite the housing production over the last 10 years, our zoning code does not comply with the new Section 3A, largely because much of the new development has been approved through a discretionary permitting process, not by right. To amend our zoning code to allow for the unit capacity required in the draft compliance guidelines would be a tremendous change that will require careful consideration of the impacts and an actionable plan to mitigate the impacts of future growth. We recognize that the unit capacity is not a production goal. However, it will certainly result in more housing development. To determine whether compliance with the new Section 3A requirements would be an appropriate decision for our community, we would need to conduct a thorough planning process, which we cannot do without the, within the deadline set by DHCD. To distribute the impacts of the Commonwealth's housing production goals more equitably, we believe the guidelines should contain criteria that recognize the proactive MBTA communities like Malden, who have already had the foresight and planning to increase housing stock by creating thousands of units near its rapid transit stations without being required to do so by statute when determining how MBTA communities may achieve compliance with Section 3A. Accordingly, we respectfully request that the draft guidelines be revised to address and include, number one, A, specific set of guidelines for the 14 MBTA communities as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 161A, that would include, A, waiver exemptions or reductions of unit capacity criteria based on the number of multifamily units permitted and/or constructed in the last five years prior to the pandemic of 2020 under existing zoning located within .5 miles of rapid transit station and in compliance with requirements for minimum gross density and without age restrictions. Specifically, the 25% capacity criteria should be reduced in proportion to the number of units permitted and/or constructed during the so-called look-back period. B, waiver exemption or reduction of unit capacity criteria based on existing or proposed affordability requirements on multifamily development. Malden recently adopted an inclusionary zoning ordinance and is considering further zoning changes to facilitate the development of affordable housing. 55% of Malden households are considered low-income and would qualify for most income-restricted affordable housing. This reduction allowance would recognize that the city's primary housing needs are for its low-income residents. C, as an alternative, a general process could be established that would allow a community to seek a waiver exemption or reduction based on certain criteria already engaged in relating to housing initiatives and/or development of housing units located within .5 miles of rapid transit stations within the five-year period to the pandemic of 2020. Number two, Section 2, definitions, eliminate from the definitions, developable land. The exclusion of publicly-owned land that is dedicated to existing public uses and includes city-owned properties and MBTA-owned properties located within .5 miles of rapid transit station. An alternative to elimination would be, would be to provide a process by which a community can consult with the MBTA or public owner entity to seek state approval to include parcels in a district as develop, developable land. In the event that requested revisions to the guidelines are not made, we ask that funds be placed in a reserve to be used by the City of Malden to mitigate the impacts of the potential growth on our schools and infrastructure. Due to the complexity of the draft guidelines, we request that this proposed deadline be extended further to ensure that there is sufficient time for study, planning, and public hearing. We also request the opportunity to meet with DHCD to discuss these issues before the compliance guidelines are finalized. Thank you for your consideration of these comments. Sincerely, Gary Christians, Mayor of Malden.
Thank you, Clerk Lucy, next order of business. I believe we're on licensing, right?
Yeah, I think we are.
So, you just got, every one of my pages, every one of my pages is late for one.
The Chair of License asks that I read all these licenses together. License Paper 203-22 Petition, Open Air Lot, 29 Madison Street, LLC, of 29 Madison Street, 40 spaces, it's a renewal. Paper 204-22 Petition, Open Air Lot, 2537-37 Florence Street, LLC, 25 Florence Street, 34 spaces, it's a renewal. Paper 205-22 Petition, Billiard License, Ancient Order Vibranians, Inc., Division 12, 259 Child Street, One Table, it's a renewal. Paper 206-22 Petition, Billiard License, Malden Vets of Irish Ancestry, 177 West Street, Two Tables, it's a renewal. Paper 207-22 Petition, Billiard License, Town Line, 10 Pin Corp., 665 Broadway, 15 Tables, it's a renewal. Paper 208-22 Petition, Bowlin Alley License, Town Line, 10 Pin Corp., 665 Broadway, 48 Lanes, it's a renewal. And Paper 209-22 Petition, Secondhand Dealer Cash King, LLC, 41 Levena Street, it's a renewal.
On Council, seek as most refer to license, all those in favor? All those opposed, license are referred to admitted, next order of business.
Paper 210-22 Order, that the appropriation enumerated below being in the amount of $25,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act Fund for the following projects, Spott Pond, Brook Greenway Phase 2, 25%, 25% Design Project, $25,000 from general fund.
Hold on one second, I just saw that, my, my agenda's all screwed up here. Yeah, on Council, on Council Murphy's motion to refer to finance, all those in favor? All those opposed, items referred to finance, next order of business.
Paper 211-22 Order, that the Malden City Council undertake a review of Marijuana Establishment Zoning Ordinance Title 12, Chapter 12, Section 90, and License in Marijuana Establishment Ordinance Title 6, Chapter 8, Section 070 of the Code of the City of Malden, in order to ensure that competitive advantage for equity applicants, broader geographic diversity of retail parcels, and reasonable anticipation of pending state-level legislation meant to encourage diversity and equity when awarding the remaining available cannabis licenses for applicants that meet state-certified standards for economic empowerment and social equity as defined by the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission.
Okay, on Council Linnahan's motion to refer the paper to rules and ordinance, all those in favor? All those opposed? Next order of business. Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Ron has been waiting to address us this evening, he wanted to give a very brief overview.
Oh, I forgot all about that.
That's okay, I didn't jump in there quick enough. I know we're tired and we've talked a lot of cannabis tonight.
Clearly, I didn't want to do anything, Council Linnahan, I just.
He's never speaking to me again.
I will, I will be as brief as I possibly can be, because I know it's been a late night for you all, but.
While you're hooking up, I'll just thank you all for supporting and referring this to ordinance, and thank Councilor Crowe for agreeing to move it through her committee. And just to preface, sort of, the goal for this is kind of twofold, it's, what's that?
No, I was talking to Council.
Oh.
Is that up there yet? There's a bunch of lights, so go ahead, Council.
No, I just wanted to kind of lay the groundwork, and really, the goal of putting this forward is twofold. It's really to get ahead of some state legislation, which Mr. Hogan is going to outline very, very briefly for us, that Malden is going to be affected by. But also to just take a moment when, you know, we're partway through, we're a few years into our ordinance, being implemented, we've awarded a few licenses, including tonight's. We're at kind of a natural, a natural pause when the clique is also down a person and looking to fill that seat. I think right now, if we start to look at these rules, as Ron's going to go over with us, you know, we're not changing things midway through for anybody that's partway through the process, so it's a good moment for us and puts us on a parallel track to kind of be ready for what the state is looking to change that will affect the city.
Thank you, Council, there's a bunch of lights, is this, refer to this, this, this document? Do you want Mr. Hogan speaking then? So is this a refer to, no, okay, so, and then you, you have something? Amanda already spoke, so it's, you and, you and, you and Council O'Malley, the only two lights on, so it matters in relation to this? Go ahead, Councilor.
I was just going to ask if I could be added as a sponsor, I'm not sure if this is the right time to ask that, or that's what I wanted to say, I was fully in support of this.
Okay, so Clerk, can you make sure that Council, Colleen Hayes adds this? Go ahead, you have the floor.
So again, I'll be brief, but I thought, just given the fact that you had the hearing tonight, and given this topic that Council Linnahan has on the agenda, just to take a quick step back, because I, sometimes I don't know if the public recognizes all the work that has been done in this area to try to fulfill the will of the voters, but, you know, you all passed the first ordinance back in March of 19. Within, within a month of that, we actually had advertising out for applicants for cannabis coming through, began interviewing folks just a couple months later in June, and by September, had approved the first application to come before you, and by November, had approved four, four applications that had locations and had teams that met the minimum requirements. So two folks withdrew, we had a second round that sent two more applicants to, to this body here. So even as you talk about making changes going forward, I think it's important for folks to realize there has been still, on a parallel path, an attempt to try to fulfill the desire to try to get cannabis in Malden on a timely basis. Well, everybody adapts to sort of the different directions that this, you know, this whole business goes in. So again, just wanted to start out with that, but the, the main purpose tonight is to really talk about what's happened since we all started this process, which was almost an immediate, you know, sort of, two areas of concern that were expressed by folks that were trying to get into this business. One, host community agreements that overreach. There's been talk almost from the beginning about the, the intended purpose of host community agreements, and, and the fact that cities have had a lot of leverage in getting folks to agree to things that were outside of what was intended to be contained within host community agreements. And then second, it's just the, the deep pockets that have been required for folks to sit at the table. I mean, y'all had a presentation tonight where one of the requirements was to keep 9,000 square feet empty and paid for through rent. And, and that sort of tells you what it is folks are dealing with to try to comply with what's out there, right? I mean, that was a requirement, it was sort of funny to listen to, that, that they had to pay for that and keep it empty, empty. If you don't think that that impacts who can get in this business, you know, you're kidding yourself. And then, of course, the third is just a lack of participation by disadvantaged groups. I think even we as a body, this being the Cannabis Commission, as we started hearing from licensees, as much as we know folks wanted us to move fast, it also became very apparent that moving fast just sent a, a litany of the same type of candidates through for, for applications. So in some ways, those two are at odds with each other, the desire to try to have this, this industry involve some other folks than what we've seen, and the desire to move fast, you know, are competing interests. So the next slide has absolutely nothing to do. So, the next slide has absolutely nothing to do with anything except that it's been a long night. So, this is a picture of my dog and my granddog sitting in my soon-to-be daughter-in-law's car, and I thought it actually just might break things up a little bit, so...no, no.
You're out of order.
So, what's more important, though, is, as Counsel Linnan and I spoke about, just a couple weeks ago, the Mass Senate had several competing bills out there on this. They were able to consolidate them and pass a bill that has some really important things that, depending on what version, makes its way through the House, and there is strong support from folks on the House side to try to figure out how to get something done quickly. It definitely has an impact on some of the things that we've done here. So, the first is, the Senate bill provides an incentive communities to license social equity applicants. I think the Cannabis Control Commission and the legislature recognized that the encouragement that was contained within the first law wasn't enough, and they're now providing a carrot whereby they're going to take a portion of the revenue they generate, create a pool, and distribute it to those communities who have licensed social equity applicants, you know, pro-rata based upon the sales of your social equity applicant. So, they're providing a financial incentive for folks by saying, "Well, create a pool and share it only amongst those who, you know, make an attempt to do this." Completely new approach. The second, and this is a big one, is they are altering significantly the approach to host community agreements. Right now, it's been just a default by cities to add in a 3% community impact fee. The proposed legislation will actually require us instead to determine after the fact the actual impacts that that establishment has had. And here's the key, above and beyond what another business would have had in that same location. So, it's not even starting from ground zero. But when it comes to things like traffic, it's not every piece of traffic they generate, but every piece they generate above and beyond what some other business might have generated there. So, it certainly creates a much more difficult scenario to sort of gain access to the revenue that some folks thought might have been available. They did reject...there was some talk about them making this retroactive so that agreements that had already been signed would have to comport with this. They didn't do that, but what it means is that we could end up with a two-tiered system. We have two folks that have already signed agreements, and we've got one that you just approved tonight that's going to move forward, and if they move too fast, then they'll, you know, sign an agreement that might be before this comes in place. So, you'll end up with likely two different scenarios out there. So, they've a...and the second thing, and this is an important one, too, is that the Cannabis Control Commission will now have to approve agreements unless both parties sign a waiver, a mutual consent, that they're not going to require that. So, again, they're inserting themselves into the process in a way that's never happened before. Third thing is they're establishing a social equity trust fund. This is not as impactful to us, but it's indicative of their commitment to try to gain entry to folks into this business by giving them access to capital through grants, no-interest loans, and forgivable loans that will be available to social equity applicants just because I think they've recognized that, you know, waiving 50% of an application fee for a social equity applicant wasn't really getting folks where they needed to get to. And then, finally, the law, the fifth important thing that it does is to establish an approval process for on-premise consumption. So, it is clear the legislature moving this ball forward and providing two different options. One is for you all to just adopt a local ordinance that allows for it, and then the second is a voter ballot if a petition is signed by 10% of voters. So, these things, all taken together, mean that even if we don't know exactly what the changes are going to be, they'll...if some version of this passes, and I can almost assure you it will, it's just a matter of what and when, at the very least, I believe you're going to find yourself having to change some of your ordinances as it relates to host community agreements, and you're going to want to have this dialogue about some of the other pieces of the ordinances that would comport to some of the goals that they have out there for, you know, getting more folks involved that are social equity folks. And, you know, clearly, there's the Cannabis Control Commission...this is what they've got out there for the state law. They also have empowered the Cannabis Control Commission to adopt additional rules and regulations that further the goal of increasing participation at the municipal level of social equity applicants. So, we can do one of two things. We can say, "The change is coming, let's move fast and get to the maximum number of licenses," and when the changes happen, there won't be any licenses left in Malden, or we can sort of figure out how to let some of this happen and make sure that if it is a desire that the community has to make sure that we have some balance across the license types, that this gets the chance to develop and become part of what it is that we do. So, again, I told you I'd be brief. Hopefully, that was briefed enough, but I know you're going to talk about it in committee, but the whole idea was to just give you an idea of what some of the pieces are that are coming down the pike, and I am going to try to get a feel from Rep Altrino just sort of where the house piece is at. But as Counsel Linnan and I spoke about, I don't think it's a terrible idea to have a parallel track, even if it feels like you're shooting at a moving target. It's a target that at some point, time's going to stop in that general vicinity, so...thank you.
Okay, Counsel O'Malley's first.
I'd like to thank Ron and Counsel Linnahan for bringing this forward. One of the challenges, like you pointed out, is that our zoning doesn't allow accessory uses, and it has to be like the only use. I think that's a pretty low-hanging fruit that I don't think is going to be very controversial. I mean, who cares if another business is in the same building? I mean, whatever, I mean, obviously, none of the things that we don't allow within the buffer zone, but who cares? I mean, for me, it doesn't make sense that we're making them spend all of that additional money and they can't use the space. So, I think that would be a pretty low-hanging fruit that probably isn't controversial. And, you know, I'd love to see this discussion progress. I do have a motion because I think it would be helpful. I would like to move, and hopefully I can have a second in the support, just to request a legal memo from our Solicitors Department about the discussion that has been happening about buffer zones and dimensional controls. So, understanding the...because I've tried to look at this, I don't fully understand it, but the relationship between buffer zones and dimensional controls, that would be super helpful when we start this discussion because it's still kind of like a gray area out there that we probably should have clarity because we're making decisions as a body, the city's making decisions as a body, and that matter is like so essential to know. I'd like that clarity. So, that would just be my motion, kind of being inspired by your conversation.
I think Counsel Linnan seconded it.
What is it?
I believe it's a motion to have the Legal Department look at buffer zones and...
What are you asking them to look at, actually?
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on. I don't know why I shut it off.
Sir, I'll repeat my motion. I'm requesting a...
Why does it keep shutting off, Counsel?
Requesting a legal memo explaining the relationship between buffer zones and dimensional controls. I've talked to the mayor's office, I've talked to Nelson, I've talked to Ron, I've talked to a number of people, and there's still some confusion about where that lies. And we're making decisions as a city that we should probably have it in writing what the rule is so that we know we're making the right decision because, you know, this is a pretty monumental thing, and we want to make sure that we're making the right decisions. Thank you.
Counsel Seeker.
Thank you, Counsel President. Counsel O'Malley, I'm pretty sure when we created this ordinance three or four years ago at this point, I don't remember, yeah, 18, 19? I think the Legal Department went over what we had put in the ordinance. So, if there was an issue between the zoning and the dimensional controls, I think they would have picked up on that when we first did this ordinance. Ron, what is your take on the difference between zoning and dimensional controls?
So, I'm not smart enough to answer that, and I'm not being a wise guy when I say that. I don't know enough about either topic. I think what Counsel O'Malley's saying is that the one thing that falls outside of the purview of the council through the special permit process is the variance for, you know, for a buffer zone, and your question is whether or not that appropriately falls on that side or it falls as an adjunct to a dimensional control. And I think that, I mean, I don't want to put words in it, but, and I think it's just a matter of, is that a topic for discussion to figure out if it cleans up the licensing process and, you know, streamlines it? But, I mean, I think you're just asking for legal to opine on whether or not it fits where it is now or whether or not there's another way to look at it. Is that right?
Okay. I'm just a little...the topic of zoning and buffer zones to me is it's aggravating because we haven't discussed zoning and buffer zones and dimensional controls up until an applicant was denied a variance through the Board of Appeal and who happens to be an acquaintance/friend of many of you. And if Counselus Batafora and I was to do something like request things be changed so somebody can go through that we may have known, we would be all over the news. The same group of people that wrote letters of support and that are sitting in the audience tonight would be smearing us all over social media, but instead, they're praising certain people for bringing this particular paper into ordinance, and every single one of the public comments this evening were about zoning. And some of them actually sounded like they were referring to the exact petition that got denied in front of the Board of Appeal. So, I'd like to know if somebody has information that doesn't...isn't what is read on this docket, because I read this docket and I think we're going to look at what the state is looking to change. But all the public comments that came in and the people that spoke in favor accused the City Council of dragging our feet. Somebody on Facebook said that we had a de facto ban because we weren't allowing them. We just approved the third one this evening. I'm just...I'm having a hard time with what we're doing, what we're not doing, so I don't... if this is what the state's doing and what Ron just said, then I'm all for looking into that. But as far as changing zoning and buffer zones and all of that, I think it's absolutely ridiculous, and I'm going to call all of you out the way Craig or I would be called out for it because if we did this for somebody that we supposedly knew, then we would be burned at the stake for it. And literally. And it's just...
She's not done.
Somebody must know something because every public comment this evening talked about zoning, and everything on social media since last Thursday discusses that a certain applicant could possibly move forward if this ordinance gets changed. So, I'm just curious what exactly the intent for this particular paper is for. Is it for what Ron presented tonight, or is it so we can change the buffer zones so a few people's friends can get what he wants? Just curious.
Counsel O'Malley, you asked to respond. There's a bunch of lights here.
So, I don't know about the paper because I had nothing to do with it. My request came up in conversations I've had with Ron and was jogged by the presentation that he just gave.
And I don't mean to jump on you, but you happened to bring up zoning and buffer zones? So, it's like, okay, so are we discussing changing zoning and buffer zones to accommodate a specific petitioner?
If I may, I'm not suggesting changing any zoning. I didn't propose this. I'm asking for clarification on the current law because...
Because it just seems like ever since...
If I could just finish, because usually I understand what's going on, and in this instance, I'm not clear. And all I'm asking is for clarity, and I think that the opaqueness and the confusion isn't just me. I think that there's a number of us who are a little confused about what the law actually says, and when that occurs, usually we ask our Legal Department to provide us some type of explanation so that we can go off that and be like, "Okay, we made the right decision. This is what the law is." That's all I'm asking.
And that's fine, and I apologize for, you know, coming at you, but looking at this, Counselus Batafora and I, a couple of years ago, tried to relook at it, and we had our heads cut off, literally. But now, it feels like ever since a certain petitioner was denied a variance for a buffer zone, all I hear about is people looking to change the buffer zones and the ordinance, and let's take another deep-dive look, and this and this, and it just so happens, coincidentally, that the state is actually revisiting things. So, now, we're going to somehow talk about changing things, and is this zoning in the buffer zone going to kind of get snuck in there and changed, too? And it's just, it's not okay. We just had the third petitioner get approved this evening. There are plenty of parcels in this city, and I think we have two applications waiting, are we not?
Yep.
So, we've actually had, not only did we have this one, but...so, we actually have had five applications go through CLAC, approved. Two backed out. Mass Medicon backed out and Craft Cultivation backed out. So, we've actually had five applications that were approved through our CLAC. So, if we de facto banned this, and if we don't have enough things, like, it's crazy to me. It's just absolutely crazy to me. And I don't mean to put Counselus Batafora on the spot, but we tend to be the scapegoats up here for all kinds of things. We get accused of doing things that others are doing. What they're doing, they're blaming us for, and I feel like this is exactly what's going on here. This is something that we would be burned at the stake. The news would be knocking on my door right now if I was looking to change buffer zones for a mutual friend slash acquaintance for me. It's not okay. If it's good for one, this needs to be good for the other, and the zoning is the zoning. So, I have no intentions of changing buffer zones. I didn't even...I don't think I wanted to go to 75 feet when we were discussing the 75 to the 150. And I...all of you up here, I can sit here and guarantee, none of you would want a pot shop directly next door to your house. And if we remove these buffer zones, that's exactly what we're going to be doing on industrial and highway business to some people, especially in Counselus Seminelli's ward. He's worried about a warming center, he's going to have a warming center, pot shop, everything in Ward Seven.
You also, Counsel?
So, I just want to make sure what we're looking to do here with this ordinance because it's not right. It's not right.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm going to go down the list. Counsel Winslow?
Yeah, and Ron, and Peg, you know, one of the things I'm just curious about is sort of something that Counsel Seeker mentioned about where Malden is compared to, like, the state as a whole of, you know, we have...our other communities situated with five, you know, licenses or more, and, you know, are we, you know, making the same progress as others? So, that's one thing, just to bring it in rules and ordinance, I'm not asking for an answer now. And, I mean, just relation to Counsel O'Malley's question, I wasn't involved in this paper. But, you know, one of the understandings I had was, and some of it's my own ignorance about special permitting, is that I always understood that when the council makes itself the special permitting body, we can act on variances, too. So, I think that's kind of the...I'd like that clarification of why in this instance is it different than my understanding, maybe? I mean, that's what I want. I mean, I understood is that one reason why we wanted to put the council as the special permitting authority here was so we didn't have the Planning Board and the Zoning Board doing stuff. So, I'd like that clarification of why is this different? So, it's nothing, you know, that would be helpful to me to understand that difference. You know, it is something that I'd like to, you know, it's legitimate to try to understand, you know, that, you know, for educational purposes, for future drafting or whatever. Thank you.
Counsel Linnan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Lot to respond to. Try to focus on, so, the issue of the buffer, for example. We could talk about that, or we could not. It's sort of intentionally worded in such a way that we can look at whatever the council feels is the appropriate aspect of the zoning or the licensing process, to Ron's point around the state process of what will get us the type of industry that we want to have for the remaining licenses. This is something that the mayor and I, and the building commissioner, and Maria, and others have been working on for months. We started looking at it back in January when the legislation was first moving. To be quite honest with you, we took a big step back when the most recent proposal came through because we didn't want it to be construed as directed towards one applicant. The legislation is advancing. I think it's a good time for us as a city to try to be ahead of what the state's doing. It's absolutely a good time to be ready for stuff that we are going to have to do anyway. I think if we get it in committee now, then we don't have to start in, say, the fall after this passes. And again, to Ron's point on one of his last slides, could we advance more licenses and then not have them be equity applicants or get the extra revenue? Yes, but is that what we want to do? I think that's the reason why we want to talk about it now. We could continue with our process as it is right now and see what moves through, and if they're equity applicants, great, and if they're not, they're not. That's what the will of the council is. But we are going to be leaving real money on the table, most likely, once this bill passes. But again, it's also about what kind of industry we want to have in the city. So, there is the state piece, but I also feel it's just the right thing to do. We're at a moment where we wrote an ordinance before we had proposals before us. We've had several move-throughs, some successfully, some have fizzled out for lots of different reasons. You know, we sat for three hours... You know, we sat for three hours tonight listening to a proposal that's gonna be more than half-empty, that is bound by parking restrictions for that empty space. It, to, to my opinion, that kinda made the point I'm trying to make, which is that there are some low-hanging fruit aspects of our ordinance that we could adjust, that would simplify, that would streamline, that would help the businesses, and quite frankly, would help consumers, because what we're left with now is so few parcels, potentially, they could be sighted close enough to each other that it's not good for them or, or the city. I don't wanna see us lose commercial revenue, both from being able to bring in equity applicants that get us sort of that bonus funding, or from having to have empty businesses around the city. I mean, that's what we're looking at with this primary use restriction. Maybe that is, as Ryan said, as Councilor O'Malley said, the low-hanging fruit that we look at first, and it's, and we never look at the buffer. I mean, there's a lot of things that we could look at, but I wanna be crystal clear that this is intentionally broadly written. We've, we've pulled back some of the specifics that I thought might be helpful or illustrative in finalizing this, because I didn't want anybody to read into it that it was one or two things that we were trying to do. I think all options are on the table, and I, I don't want us to over-deliberate outside committee either. I think that's the right place to have the debate. But to be clear about the intention, it's to make the ordinance what we want it to be for the remaining licenses that we have to give, and to do that in dovetail with the state process that's happening, you know, without us.
And Councilor Lindahan, Councilor Hayes?
Councilor Cologne Hayes, I did, I, I mean, Councilor Lindahan just said everything, so I don't have anything to add to that. What I originally wanted to do was to just ask, move forward with Councilor O'Malley's request to have the city solicitor explain some of the buffer zone issues or anything else that we have questions with, especially as a new council coming on to this, even though I've been following it, it would be helpful. So I just think that that's a really good suggestion, and I'd originally push my button just to second that and move forward with that original request.
And Councilor Cologne Hayes, Councilor Semenelli?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, look, you know, I, I think this is a good paper. I think that we need to revisit this paper, and I'm gonna tell you why. I was talking to Nelson Miller, Director of Inspectual Services, today, and we were talking about the different site locations of where they could put a cannabis shop, that's what we're calling it, I guess, these days, right? Cannabis shop. And I see like, a lot of information up here, and I'm hearing a lot of information. Again, I, I wasn't around here, I wasn't elected, an elected official at the time when this thing was happening. From what I understand, you guys have been doing this since 2019, and it's a tough project. I, I get it. But from what I understand is that, you know, we talk about like, again, the low, the moderate income, diversity, you know, there should be diversity, folks buying into this, and, you know, being able to open up these cannabis shops. But then we take my neighborhood, we take my ward once again, right? And we talk about that. And I was told tonight that there's nowhere in my neighborhood that a cannabis shop can go, cuz it doesn't meet the zoning, it doesn't meet the setbacks, it doesn't meet the dimensional controls. So therefore, what happens then? All the stuff that everybody's talking about, and I, I'm, I'm gonna be as quick as I can, 'cause I know this has been a long night for everybody, but, you know, I, I, I try and stay quiet, and then all of a sudden, someone brings up an issue that just kinda sparks me, you know, and it just gets me going. No pun intended on the spark. But what I'm saying, what I'm saying is that you're talking about a neighborhood, right, that, that does use marijuana, a lot, in my neighborhood. You know, and I'm not, you know, I'm not sad or embarrassed to say it, it's, it's the truth. So what happens is now those folks have to walk, right? Cuz transportation isn't a, isn't a big thing for us down there. So they have to walk to another part of the city to go and, and participate in some of these cannabis stores, when, again, I guess in a nutshell, you're saying that, you know, this is designed for diversity, equity, low, moderate income, blah, 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 all this stuff. I'm getting kinda tired of it, because then, not with just this issue, but many others. Because then, when it comes to my neighborhood, which is the most impacted neighborhood, do we agree, that it's the most impacted neighborhood on these things that we're talking about, it's zoned right out of it. They don't even get it, they don't even, if they wanted to have a cannabis store, they can't even have one. So where do they go? And I'll tell you what it does do also, it continues the crime for those people that are selling marijuana illegally, to keep those people flush with cannabis. Because what are they gonna do if they can't, if they can't get to a legal cannabis store? They're gonna end up what? Buying it illegally. So, you know, the things that were talked about tonight, about, you know, crime, you know, diversity, equity, low to moderate income, folks, and then, with that being said, once again, my neighborhood is just totally left out of the process because of the zoning. So yeah, I, I do welcome this paper, because I think we do need to take a second bite of the apple to see how we can maybe, now that the licenses are, they're almost gone, but how maybe we can see if somebody down in my low-income, high-diversity neighborhood can have one of those shops down there, so people have a walking distance to go to, to, to be able to get this commodity, and not be able to have to walk around and figure out how they're getting to the other parts of the city. You know, Route 60 corridor alone, you know, in, in, in my neighborhood, it's not a very long corridor for, for Ward 7, but it's, it's out, it's not zoned. And I'm not saying it's anybody's fault, I mean, I, I know this is something, it's a work and paper, it's something that's going on, and something new, and I know everybody's doing the best they can in this city to make it right, and I, and I commend everybody for that, and I appreciate it. But I do, I do, I, I do believe in this paper, because I think we do need to go and we look at it, because, again, I know I said this like, three times, but I can't say it enough, my neighborhood has been zoned out. Zoned out. So I, I, once again, you know, and I, I'm sitting up here for like, four hours, and, you know, my neighborhood on these topics, and my neighborhood out, isn't getting any of these benefits from anywhere. And I gotta tell you right now, you can mock my words, as I'm sitting up here, those things are going to stop. And I'm serious, and I'm getting tired of it. Because, you know, we sit here, we use the neighborhood as statistics and everything else, and I'm not liking what I'm seeing at all as I'm moving forward here. So help me, help my neighborhood. I'm asking you for that, not just on this issue, but on many others. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yep. Councilor McDonald?
I didn't touch it. I tried to, but then I pulled it back, so, okay.
Good.
Very quickly, first, I just wanted to thank Councilor Lindahan for just getting us to this point. I can tell it's been, you know, as we can see, it, this is not an easy lift to wade into these waters. So with that mixed metaphor, I just wanna appreciate the work that has brought us to this point. I do think that the value of looking at the collective impact of all of our different pieces of the puzzle, this is a good time to do that, you know, halfway through the, halfway through the licenses that we have to award with these state incentives on the table. The other point, I just wanna say, you know, Council Seeger, my hope would be that by trying to have a constructive conversation as a council in this, we can take the discussion off of social media, where, you know, there's lots of incentive to, Facebook literally promotes conflict. It's literally a trillion-dollar empire invested in conflict. And there are some, there are some valid questions, legal, you know, there's lots to talk about that, that is helpful and valid, and we may, we will likely all not agree at the end of the day, but I do, my hope would be that by having a constructive, you know, defined conversation with access to information, it will improve the quality of discourse around this, regardless of where it ends up. So I, and it's, and I'm, would be happy to commit to help just supporting that wherever I can.
Anybody else? So I'm gonna speak for two seconds here on this topic, as I was brought into it. I would just say this, you know, I've heard what I deem to be complete and utter false, I, I will use social media as that. I do not go on it. It is the bane of this country, and only now it's being recognized there. But what the problem is there is people can say what they want and villainate people, and they don't get, there's no recourse. So I think the reason why Council Seeger gets mad is because there was rumors that I was opening a pot shop, Council Seeger was opening a pot shop, and when I asked for this exact, exact process to happen two years ago, not only was the public chastising me, but also some of the people up here, Council McCall. I'm only talking to you because I agree with your statement about validity and having a constructive conversation. Because exactly what the discussion is happening now, now the state's forcing our hand. But at that time, we had two licenses approved, and we didn't know which direction to go. And I asked for a pause, and there was an uproar. Not even an uproar. I would say, when people start calling your house and telling your kids, who are answering the phone, your dad's in the pocket, that's where you draw the line. So I, I find it funny now, it's, it's a perfect time. Maybe it's a coincidence, but I don't think it is. And when people are telling me through lawyers that this body is changing the council rules for an individual, I'm gonna call you out on it, because I expect you to call me out on it. Okay? And when the council, you heard it tonight, you read the letters, we dragged our feet, we haven't done our due diligence. I don't, I don't get insulted. Don't care, that's what this job's about. I have two rules. You go after my kids, there's gonna be a problem. You insult the people that work for us on a daily basis who carry this? That's a problem, because I know Ron, and Michelle, and, 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 and Nelson Miller, and even, even the past members of that committee, it was a lot of work. And the three licenses that came before this committee? I voted for three of them. Not everybody up here voted for three of them. And that's fine, but don't paint me as an anti-pot guy. Voted for three of them. And every, and every, every license that came before this council was voted on, every one. Now, maybe your license didn't come up here, and you're mad at the world, that's fine, that is fine. But to villainate the body, that I personally think, everybody knows Ron's work, we're ahead of the state. I'll be honest with you, to some degree, I think we are, cuz we didn't go after that big dollar tick in the sky where, where the mayor of Fall River went away for it, essentially, right? That's what, that's what he went away for, is, is shaking down those committees. And the idea that these, these businesses weren't opened up because of us, we passed them. If Nelson was here, we'd tell you, there's construction problems, everybody wanna talk about the supply chain, they can't get the stuff in the buildings, they can't get the cameras. We want the revenue. We want the revenue. But this idea that we're not trying to dance on a subject that we all know what's happening is complete and utter lies. And I think that's all the Council Seeger said, and that's fine. But if, if we're gonna open up, if we're gonna be honest and truthful with each other, I'm gonna call it out, just like I've been called out. But the difference with me is, I'm not lying. I, I don't, I'm not getting a pot license, I've never had any intention to have a pot license, I don't have 20 restraining orders against me. So if we're gonna talk about being validated, let's be validated. But I can assure you right now, this idea of coming to the City of Malden every time and just pointing fingers and saying, we're not doing a good job in marijuana, it, it's insulting to him and the committee and the workers who do this every day. It's not us. Our, our job is essentially was done, we passed them. When they get a license, that's up to them to open the property, not us. Cuz every time I read these letters, Maldens dragged their feet, Maldens dragged their feet, we have three approved, Merros has one. And I just wanna say the last time, and this is one of my, cuz I get a little, you know, excited about this, is when I re-asked for this pause for the councils who weren't there, phone calls to my house, phone calls to my dad's business, which I don't own. But that's okay, because it's me. But if it was any one of you, oh, they'd be, they would be, they'd be, they'd be hell to pay. But the difference is, you know what? You can attack me, that's fine, but I would stand up for you guys. There's a line, there's a line. And it's been crossed numerous times, and what's happening right now is exactly what I requested. And you know how the request came up? Because I talked to the cannabis committee, cuz they wanted to say, we, we, we just passed two, we should take a look and see this. Maybe the low-hanging fruit, like Councilor O'Malley, was part of that discussion. We didn't wanna talk about it, though, didn't wanna talk about it. You know why? Because that individual or that particular licenses weren't ready to come up. Now that they've come up, or maybe it's a coincidence, let's slow, let's slow down, let's take a suss, let's look at the rules now. So let's be honest, let's be truthful, let's be adult, Councilor, let's not, I don't go on Facebook, I don't, my wife updates, I tell everybody that, I don't debate in there, but love to share the stories with everybody here, but that's why I had to say that. Okay? Because if it walks like a duck sometimes, it talks like a duck. Council Hayes, Council Cologne Hayes?
Cologne Hayes, thank you.
I'm just tired, Council, I'm trying to abbreviate everybody.
That's okay, I'm tired too, I get it. I just wanted to say, I'm, I don't actually have the words to say what I'm feeling right now, I'm a little embarrassed, and for our council right now, but I, I wanted to say that if we need to keep, if we're gonna talk social media, we need to keep it out of this council, right? We can talk about it, we all get blasted on social media, every single one of us. And since you just said you, you would wanna be called out, I just have to say this, because my child was also brought into it, so I get it, and it was by you, so I, I just wanna be clear about that. And so I just, if we're gonna keep kids out of it, let's just keep kids out of it, and let's keep social media off of this council. But I have to address it.
Yeah, that's a good point, Council, you're right. And so let's not change rules based on social media, right?
So let's just go, let's change, let's go move forward with what Councilor Lindahan worked so hard on, with the mayor's office and everybody else.
Oh, no, I, I, listen, I completely, I, I talked to Council Lindahan, I talked to the committee, we're gonna have to do this anyways to some degree. So I believe Councilor O'Malley has a motion, seconded by Council Lindahan, which is, I believe, having the legal department review this. Clerk Colerole. Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Lindahan?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Seeger?
Yes.
Semenelli?
Yes.
Winslow?
Winslow, yes.
Spatafor? Yes. Uh, this has been, have we referred this to committee? We did. We did, we did, right? That's why I've been referring. Did you refer? Thank you. Will you, I believe you already shared that with the clerk, with us, we already had that, right? You said the other day? All right, thank you. Next order of business.
Paper 405-21, order be hereby ordained, section 12, the revised ordinance is 2020, effective 1/1/2020, be amended by adding title 12, chapter 12, section 300, site plan review to the code of City of Malden.
On Councilor Crowe's motion to ordain, clerk Colerole?
Can I have a second on it?
Oh, I need a second. Council Condon? Oh, Council Winslow, second it? Clerk Colerole?
Cologne Hayes?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Lindahan?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Seeger?
Yes.
Semenelli?
Yes.
Winslow?
Winslow, yes.
Spatafor?
Spatafor, yes. Next order of business.
Motion to roll.
Under committee reports, committee report, the standing committee on finance, whom was referred papers 169-22.
Yeah, Council, Council Crowe, go ahead. Oh, and Council Murphy has her laid on too, I'm sorry. Oh, Council Murphy.
She's the head of the committee.
Excuse me, Council Crowe.
So I just said, make a motion that I recuse myself, because it is, I'm gonna talk about community development block grant, I don't get money from that, but I do work for an organization that does, is on the list.
So on Councilor Crowe's motion to ordain herself, all those in favor?
Ordain myself.
Did I say ordained? It's a long night, ladies and gentlemen. Yeah, well, well, welcome to the sisterhood. On Councilor Crowe's motion to...
Recuse.
Recuse herself, all those in favor? All those opposed? Councilor Crowe is recused.
report, that these papers be reported out favorably to the full city council.
On Counselor Murphy's motion, receive the committee report. All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Counsel, Counselor Murphy for the Finance Committee. Counselor Simonelli?
Yes. So this is the annual request for the community development block grant. Okay, we have Alex Pratt from OS, OS
PCD.
CD, no.
PCD.
Yeah, whatever. You said it. And he, he will actually go over this. This was actually discussed at length in the Finance Committee last week. We have moved it out favorably to the full city council with a unanimous vote.
Am I passing this around?
And I believe the updated April 19th version is coming around to everyone. The budget is comprised of a number of different sections. I'll ask Mr. Pratt to run us through quickly. I think, you know, we, we know that the couple of areas that always cause a little bit of confusion, which is the prior uncommitted balance, how affordable housing works, and then just a brief explanation of why some folks did not reapply. Because some of the counselors who weren't here last week, I'm sure will be, will be interested in, or have a question as to why some folks did not reapply. But other than that, it's pretty cut and dried, it's almost a mirror image of last year. But Mr. Pratt will talk about the funding and how it's been budgeted, predicated on the fact that we're still waiting for, for the final figure. So I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Mr. Pratt, just as you know, name and address for the record, and like I said to your coworker, Mr. Evan, I'm gonna ask you the same decorum, let's keep this efficient and let's keep this very fast.
Yes, yes, Mr. President, I'll keep this brief but thorough.
We know it's not your fault, your hearers with us, so we get it.
I appreciate you saving the main event for me.
Yes.
My name's Alex Pratt, I'm the Community Development Director for the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development, OSPCD, the City of Malden. The CDBG budget before you tonight, as Counselor Murphy indicated, is fairly similar to the budgets that you've seen in previous years. The one major distinction here is we don't have our final number from HUD yet, and that's because Congress passed their budget late. They are still requiring us to pass our budget on time, which is why we have a budget based in front of you that's based on a projection. We are projecting a cut to this budget based on what has happened at the federal level. And we do anticipate that the number that we have here is a pretty conservative reading into that, so hopefully when we get that final number, we will, we will be adding slightly instead of decreasing slightly, but we've made provisions for both. So just very briefly, that HUD number that we'll be getting hopefully very soon is called the entitlement, that's our total entitlement, entitlement number. We're getting, we're anticipating receiving 1.35 million in the coming fiscal year. And then we have our prior uncommitted balance, so this figure is $427,000. That's a combination of loan payoffs that we've received primarily from our CDBG rehab program over the past, over the past year, plus savings from programs that come in under budget or don't run, or things of that nature, savings that can be had and loan payouts. Just very briefly on each category, our rehab budget, so that's under this affordable housing category, this figure goes to the housing rehab program. It is cut substantially over the prior year. That is because we were cut at the federal level and because we have received other federal funding that significantly increases the overall amount of money that we have for this project through a different grant. So we earned for the first time a competitive healthy homes production grant this year, which is $1.7 million over three years. So with that in mind, when we had to make cuts from this budget, we felt comfortable doing that from rehab and knowing that we're still gonna be able to have, be able to fund the programs that we need to fund. On the public services side, we show a, a cut here as well. The public services budget, as many of you know, is limited to 15% of the entitlement amount, that's what we have shown here. We did have to cut two organizations, we did so keeping in mind the levels at which that will affect actual service delivered. So even though this will affect certain staffing and capacity levels at those organizations, it will not be felt by Malden families, which was our priority. Those two organizations are ABCD, which is getting a $1,000 cut from $15,000 to $14,000, and the First Bridge of the Nazarene, which operates the Malden Warming Center, which is getting a cut from $16,500 to $15,000. We do intend, if we do see our final number increase, that we do intend to restore those cuts if the HUD funding allows. That's just where we decided to make those cuts based on the operation of those programs. Counselor Murphy asked that I explain why the number of public service organizations dwindles a little bit every year. And it's not always the case, sometimes we are adding, but the last couple of years we've received significant requirements from HUD, from the Office of Management and Budget, from OIG, and from other federal entities. It makes it very hard to operate a $5,000 grant program for some of these very small organizations when they're required to have accounting principles and things of that nature. So as the program becomes more onerous at the federal level, it becomes harder for the small organizations to participate. Two organizations chose not to apply this coming year, China's Culture Connection and UMA. I don't know the specific reasons for why they did, but I know that in general, those reporting requirements are difficult, so it takes organizations that have, that are willing to take that administrative burden on for the amount of money that they are receiving. Moving on to physical improvements, we have three physical improvement projects this year.
Counsel, hold on a second. Counselor, you have your light on, do you ever wanna ask Mr. Pratt a question now? Do you wanna wait till the end? Okay, I just wanna, you know, I know you get very excited about this stuff.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Three projects under physical improvements this year, we have the ADA pedestrian improvements, that's pretty typical, we've done it the last several years. These are ADA pedestrian improvements to sidewalks, intersections, they're ADA accessible pads and signalization to help people who are handicapped, physically handicapped to get around, particularly focusing on audible, audible signals so that people who are sight and seeing impaired can move across our sidewalks and intersections safely. Mazonsen Basketball Court at Green Street Park. This basketball court, we've done some work, I think we did lasted work here maybe 10, 15 years ago. There are subsurface issues to this court, so working with the ward counselor, who has recused herself, but knowing the priorities in the ward, we've, we looked at this project and looked at the court and said, we can either fix it now for $10,000 and be in this situation five, five years from now when the subsurface issues arise again and the core is cracked, or we can fix it for real. So that's what we're gonna do, we're gonna do it right. It's a $140,000 project, and that will completely reconstruct the subsurface and the, the top, the top of the top lot, excuse me, the top of the basketball court. So it'll be a new court at that, at that court, which should last for a long time. And then our other big physical improvement project is the Early Learning Center Playground. We're very excited about this project. The Early Learning Center Playground, as many of you know, is not the way we would build a playground today. It is, there's a lot of asphalt, there's not a lot of age-appropriate play, and it's not the most, it's not the best use of the space. So we are anticipating making significant changes to that area, that expands the amount of play space, upgrades the equipment, provides for more, for, for handicap accessible equipment that allows for safety surfacing, and that also streamlines the access to the, to the school at that, at that site from, from behind the school, including by making some changes to the parking that improves that, that flow. And we are also going to be adding a access point on Tremont Street, which will allow the playground to be more accessible to the neighborhood when school is not in session. Planning admin and management, this is 20% of our entitlement budget. We do it every year, it covers a lot of what we do at OSPCD as it relates to CDBG. Again, as the entitlement number changes based on what HUD will give us, this number will change as well to match that 20%. Section 108 loan repayments, this is payments of principal and interest, we make them two times a year for loan payments that have already been approved. There's nothing that this council has not voted on that is on here tonight. I will note that the item for Roosevelt Park is an estimate, because we don't have the final financing from HUD yet, but we anticipate getting that shortly and then, but we anticipate this estimate being pretty close, we, we should be able to cover it based on that estimate. So that's our total, $1.777 million CDBG budget. I do wanna just read through these contingency provisions. Because we don't know our final number from HUD, we have to determine, we have to share with you and to the public how we will spend money, how we will change our budget if we get more or less money than we are, we are anticipating here. If funds are cut, the budget would be adjusted to reduce public service spending to 15% of the entitlement as it is now. We would prorate those cuts based on the services. If, and then the admin spending would also be reduced to 20% of the entitlement. And further reductions would come from the CDBG rehab program. If the entitlement amount is increased, we will increase public services at 15%, first by restoring those two organizations that were cut, and then by working on the most competitive public services applications that we received, and we have a criteria that we use to determine that. So the public services would remain at 15% in the event of an increase. The admin also would remain at 20% in the event of an increase. And beyond that, we would increase the Early Learning Center by up to $50,000, up to a total of $400,000 for that program. And any remaining increases, if we are so lucky, will be split between the ADA pedestrian improvements and the rehab program. That is our budget.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt.
Thank you, Alex.
And, and I was just gonna say, I believe, Mr. President, that, and the city clerk can maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that when we referred this to finance, that we actually read the mayor's letter in, so I don't believe that we need to do that again.
Okay, Counsel, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Simonelli, your light is on.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Well, very nice presentation. I appreciate it. Did a good
Don't touch your mic, counsel.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
That's it?
Gotcha.
No questions, our motion to adopt.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I would just say this, before we make the motion to adopt, I would just say this. This is, I think, from a council perspective, I know it's a long night and everything, but what we're doing here is very important, you know, and unfortunately, we don't get to see the public be interested in these things, and this is really what, you know, I think the council, we try to strive for, and this is
Both, yeah.
Just under the public services, the amount of support. We're helping the elderly, we're helping the neighborhoods, the Y, all these great services that, you know, everybody disperse for, but, you know, Alex, that's Kinnear on to Russia, but this is, this is really, you know, the bread and butter that this community really strives and makes us different from other communities. So I thank you for your work and the rest of the committee, and thank you for counsel for just saying surprise, that was very good counsel. So on Counsel Murphy's motion to, oh, Counsel, I'm sorry, counsel, you don't even have your light on, you can't just raise your hand.
Permission to
Oh, your second, I'm sorry. I'm getting antsy. So on Counsel Murphy's motion to adopt, seconded by Yeah, yeah, so there's two papers for this.
Right.
There's two papers. Okay, so on Counsel Murphy's motion to adopt
To, to approve 169-22.
169-22, seconded by Counsel Murphy, clerk will call the roll. Counsel O'Malley, I'm sorry, I'm getting tired.
Cologne Hayes.
Yeah, I think I got that right, yeah.
Condon.
Yes.
Crowe. Oh, Crowe's not here, that's right. Linehan.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
O'Malley. Seeka.
Yes.
Simonelli.
Yes.
Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Better for him.
Better for him, yes. Next order of business.
Thank you.
Gary's 10-0.
This is paper 170-22, adopt, or the City of Malden, City of Malden filed with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Consolidated Plan, including application for grants under the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended in the Cranston-Gonzalez Housing Act of 1990, as amended to be administered by the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development fiscal year 2023, including all understanding and assurances contained therein or substantially in form presented to this meeting in the, in the Gary Christensen, Mayor Chief Executive Office, Chief of Malden, be hereby directed and designated as the authorized representative for, in the name and behalf of the City of Malden, to sign and file said plan, to act in connection with said plan, and to provide such additional information as required.
So on Counsel Murphy's motion to adopt the order, seconded by Counsel O'Malley, clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes. Condon.
Yes.
Crowe.
She's not here.
Linehan, I see, okay, yeah. McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
O'Malley. Seeka.
Yes.
Simonelli. Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Better for him.
Better for him, yes. Next order of business.
Okay, we have the committee report for license committee, the Standing Committee on License, to whom was referred the below papers, have considered the same, make the following report. The committee recommends these licenses be granted. The committee voted unanimously that petition for paper 165-22 be recommended unfavorably. Chair Seeka asked that I read all the favorable papers first.
God bless her.
Motion to receive the committee report.
On Counsel Seeker's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously, Counsel, Counsel Seeker with the committee report. Oh, I gotta turn your mic on, counsel, I'm sorry, I'm losing it, sleep deprivation's kicking in.
Would you like to read them all before I talk about them?
Do I wanna read them all?
No.
You can read them, go ahead.
The clerk.
Okay, it's petition, these are, these are recommended favorably by the, by the committee. Paper 159-22, petition, open air lot, 3C Realty Trust, 54 Winter Street, 22 spaces, a renewal. Paper 160-22, petition, open air lot, Andy Service Center, Inc., 356 Lebanon Street, 12 spaces, it's renewal. Paper 161-22, petition, open air lot, Northeast Transport and Snow Services, Inc., 531 Rea Broadway, 5 spaces, it's a renewal. Paper 162-22, petition, open air lot, AMG Auto Sales, Inc., 135B Eastern Ave, 24 spaces, it's a renewal. Paper 163-22, petition, secondhand dealer, Golden Diamonds, et cetera, Inc., 29 Pleasant Street, it's a renewal. Paper 164-22, petition, pawnbroker, Golden Diamonds, et cetera, Inc., 29 Pleasant Street, it's a renewal. Paper 166-22, petition, livery, Moujade Morgue, 52 Hancock Street, it's new. And paper 167-22, petition, lodging house license, Top Tier Properties LLC, DBA Sir Carlton Realty, 33 Maple, Maple Street, 44 rooms, it's a renewal. And paper 168-22, petition, billiard license, Italian American War Vets, Malden Post, 16, 40 Oakland Street, one table, it's a renewal.
On Counsel Seeker's motion to grant?
To grant, sure, you don't, I don't even need to talk, sure, great.
Are you, excluding paper 165-22?
That one's next.
Okay. So a counsel, a counsel seeker's motion to grant the above petitions, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Licenses are granted, 11, 11-0, everybody here? 11-0, next order of business.
And there's one paper out of committee, paper 165-22, petition, class 2 dealer, Jorge L. Espenzos, DBA Gar Auto Sales, 147 Highland Ave, Avenue, 15 spaces, it's new, and it And there's one paper out of committee, Paper 165-22, petition, class 2 dealer, Georges L. Espenzos, DBA Gar Auto Sales, 147 Highland Ave., 15 spaces, it's new, and was voted unfavorable by the committee.
Unfavorable?
The License Committee met on this new class 2 dealer's license, and the plot plan, there was not enough parking spaces. Therefore, the committee made a motion to deny this license.
Yep. Okay.
Make a motion to deny.
Any questions? None, seeing that, on Counsel Seika's motion to deny the petition for Paper 165-22. Counsel McDonald, go ahead. Yep.
It, this is a new license? Doesn't this building already exist?
Say that again.
The building already exists, right? There's already a Gar Auto Sales there.
It's actually an autumn, an auto body shop, and state law requires that a class 2 dealer be the primary use of the property, and therefore, he needs like 33 spaces for him to have the auto body shop in 15 spots plus three customer and employee parking. So he submitted a plot plan with six spaces on it, just an FYI.
Thank you.
So that's why the motion to deny was, motion to deny.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, on Counsel Seika's motion to deny petition, paper, excuse me, petition for Paper 165-22, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I need a second. On Counsel, Counsel Semenelli's seconded. All those in favor to deny? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Item is denied? 10-0. Next order of business.
Okay, we have a committee reporter on the Standing Committee on Personnel Appointments, to whom was referred Papers 93-22, 94-22, 95-22, 96-22, 97-22, 98-22, and 157-22, have considered the same, make the following report, that these papers be reported out favorable to the city council. Do you want me to read all the papers together, Counsel Semenelli?
Yes, I would love, don't ask Counsel Semenelli, I'm going to overlook them anyways. We're getting them all together.
Okay, the papers of Paper 93-22, mayoral reappointment, Diana Jung, 12 West Street, to the Cannabis License and Enforcement Commission, said terms to expire on March 15, 2024. Paper 94-22, mayoral reappointment, Catherine Pinkham, Bilgin, 63 Uppam Street. Malden is the builder, architect, member of the Zoning Board of Appeal, said terms to commence upon confirmation by the council and to expire March 1, 2025. Paper 95-22, mayoral reappointment, William Coleman, 53 Kimball Street, Malden, as a member of the Department of Public Works Commission, said terms to expire March 1, 2025. Paper 96-22, mayoral reappointment, Andrew Zemigney, 16 Cross Street, as a member of the Register of Voters Board, said terms to expire March 31, 2025. Paper 97-22, mayoral reappointment, Amanda Bells, 4 Stone Lane, Apartment 5235. Malden to the Disability Commission, said terms to commence upon the confirmation by the council, said terms to expire March 15, 2024. Paper 98-22, mayoral reappointment, Eric Henry, 75 Wiley Street, Malden, to the Planning Board, said terms to commence upon the confirmation by the council and to expire March 1, 2027. And Paper 157-22, mayoral appointment, Armin Kadavir Kabardian of 11 Nealon Street. Malden is an associate member of the Board of Appeal, said terms to commence upon confirmation by the city council and to expire on March 1, 2025. Armin will fill the vacancy left by Davidson Teleka.
On Counsel Semenelli's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Counsel, Counsel Semenelli for the committee.
I think, uh...
Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel, I wasn't looking over.
I just, I think on Paper 9722, I think Amanda Bells, her, she, her name's actually B-E-L-E-M, B-E-L-L-E-S, so we might just double check that.
We did correct it.
Okay, all right, so.
We did correct it, B-E-L-L-E-S.
Yes, okay, so it's, so we should be corrected there. All right, thank you.
Good catch. On Counsel Semenelli's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Yeah, I'm dying.
All those opposed? Counsel Semenelli for the paper, the committee.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. President. You know, once again, you know, this, we had a marathon session last Tuesday in the Appointments Committee, Personnel Appointments Committee, you know, and we, the committee would recommend that we move these out favorably.
All right, on Counsel Semenelli's motion to confirm the appointments, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Next order of business.
Uh, Paper 215-22, committee report, the Standing Committee on Personnel Appointments, to whom was referred Paper 190-22. Having considered the same, make the following report to fill the appointment to the Cannabis License and Enforcement Commission.
On Counsel Semenelli's motion to receive the committee report, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Counsel Semenelli for the committee, for the committee report.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, again, once again, the Personnel Appointments Committee worked really hard tonight to move, we understood that, you know, the Cannabis Commission was vacant and down one person, so we wanted to make sure that, you know, with all, everything that's going on, Mr. President, we wanted to make sure that they had enough people on the Cannabis Committee. We had about 11 applicants for this position and one vacancy that we had, and they were all great applicants. We narrowed it down to three final contestants for the position, and they were great finalists. One of them backed, one of them had backed out, couldn't do it. So it left two for one position. So again, you know, I got to say that the, you know, this committee, Personnel Appointments Committee, is one of the best committees that I've ever worked on. I mean, to talk about harmonious relationships on that committee, how everybody really works well with one another on moving this busy committee, committee's agenda forward. So I just want to just express, as being the chairman, express to my colleagues on that committee, I really appreciate all the hard work that you do and all the help that you gave me getting through this. So tonight, we have, uh, we have Dino Summers, who was passed from the subcommittee earlier today. Seems like it was two days ago this meeting has become so long, but it was really a few hours ago. So the committee recommends that Dino Summers be placed on the Cannabis Commission as the, as a vacant applicant. If there's any discussion other than that, we'd like to have it moved on the floor, Mr. President. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no lights, on Counsel Semenelli's motion to approve Mr. Dino Summers for the Cannabis Committee, Commission, all those in, oh, I need a second.
Second.
On Counsel, Counsel Semenelli's motion to approve Mr. Dino Summers for the Cannabis Commission, seconded by Counsel Murphy, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Is everybody okay?
Paul, just stay there, we're ready to adjourn. Don't come back.
Oh, they're all ayes. Next order of business. The docket is clear, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your unwavering patience tonight. I know it was a long night for everybody, and I apologize for so many public hearings. Unfortunately, you know, the, I'm not saying it was bad, but the MRA had to do that based on the date we were given by the state. That was something me and the clerk kind of forgot about, meaning Debbie asked about it three weeks ago. We picked the date and we forgot, and that's why there is that revision on there. So apologize. I'll try to make sure we don't have a committee meeting like this again. I know it's late for everybody, so pardon my, the long agenda. Counsel Linehan has personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just really quickly wanted to let folks know. I know a few weeks back, we had unanimously passed the child marriage, our child marriage resolve and calling on the legislature to pass that. It passed the House today.
Oh, that's good.
And Rep. Altrino wanted us to know that, and outgoing's on to President Michelle Wong also called me, very excited to let me know today. It has a veto-proof majority, so it's, it's going to go through this session, which is great news, and they wanted us to say thanks for our resolve on that.
Nice. That's good.
Lovely. Good job.
That would have been scary if it didn't pass. On Counsel Karen Cologne Hayes, personal privilege, Karen.
Thank you. I'm just going to read this because I'm so tired, I don't want to make a mistake. So in case anyone's listening, or maybe they'll listen another day, I want to let everyone know about a project that was started by one of Malden's residents, Mark Bernstein. Many of us have seen the horrors happening in Ukraine and can't fathom, you know, what their lives are like or what they must be going through, or how we can even help them. So Mark did that, and he spoke about how he wakes every morning to the news of the war, and it occurred to him that he could do a little thing to help a little. So he got in touch with a pizza place in Kharkiv, I hope I'm saying that right, and ordered 10 pizzas for a bomb shelter, and from that act of kindness grew a bigger operation, and he paired with his friend, J. Scott Johnson, and since then, they've delivered over 200 pizzas to families, bomb shelters, emergency rooms, firehouses, and police stations. It's about 25 miles from the border, where our bombs and rockets and shells are going day and night, and so help has been coming all of, from all over the world, but mostly from people donating here in Malden. So if you would like to donate, you can do so. Again, it's a little thing that can help a lot, and you can go to pizzaforukraine.com, and it easily walks you through the process. It's all volunteers, no fees are taken from here, so everything goes straight to kids and families and bomb shelters in Ukraine. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Cologne Hayes. I see Counsel McDonald has a light on. Counsel McDonald.
Just wanted to briefly say congratulations to my seven-year-old Julian, who lost a tooth while we were sitting in this meeting. And, uh...
Need some cash?
If he, if he's lucky, the Tooth Fairy may make an appearance at our house tonight.
This morning?
This morning.
Right. Yeah, this morning.
And, and with that, I'd be happy to make a motion to adjourn.
Right, I love that. Second, third, fourth.
So on Counsel, by the way, how much is the going rate now for a tooth?
Twenty bucks.
Twenty bucks?
Yeah, some of his, some of his friends get $20 a tooth, and I'm like, mm, I don't know, that's not the same tooth fairy.
Yeah, supply chain issue. So on Counsel McDonald's motion, congratulations to his son, seconded by Counselor Condon, motion to adjourn. Counsel is adjourned.